... our workshop and our regular meeting. Welcome to our Meridian City Council. For the record, it is Tuesday, December 3rd. It is 6:20. We'll start with roll call attendance. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum.
Here.
Councilmember Burnt.
Here.
Councilmember Palmer.
Here.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Here.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Here.
Item number two is a pledge of allegiance. If you will all rise and join us in the pledge to our flag.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia's hands, one nation, unified, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item number three is our community invocation. Tonight will be led by Pastor Michael Pearson. Pastor Pearson is with the Seventh Day Evans Church. And I'd like to welcome you, Pastor Michael, and invite those to join us in the community invocation or take this as an opportunity for a moment of reflection.
Thank you. We invite you all to journey to Bethlehem next weekend.
Thank you. And it's always very well-prepared and it's a collaboration among-
That's right.
-the faith community. Thank you again for that gift to our community.
It's not property taxes. I'm not shaving.
[laughter]
Eternal Father, the Ancient of Days, we want to thank you that we have a flag that we can pledge allegiance to because you have given us a country that we can be proud to be citizens of. And during the season that begins with the remembrance of Christmas and the new year, I pray that you will give each one of us, citizens of Meridian and leaders of Meridian, the grace to extend the peace which the Prince of Peace offers to us. May we extend it to each other. May this be a season of reconciliation within families and between different segments of the community. And now specifically for tonight, for those who will be shortly retiring from service as mayor and city councilors, for those who will be continuing, we thank you for them. We ask that your grace and your strength will be theirs, that you will give them wisdom tonight in the decisions that they need to make. And may we be drawn together in peace as a community. I ask this in the name of our Savior. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christmas, Michael. Nice seeing you.
Okay, item four is adoption of the agenda.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Item 10A, or, excuse me, 10A, that ordinance can be removed from the agenda. With that one change, I move we adopt the amended agenda.
Okay.
I have a motion, a second to adopt the agenda as amended. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes. Under five announcement, we are kicking off our Christmas season this weekend, starting Friday night with our parade, our holiday lights parade. Goes down Main Street. We start with The Grinch, How the Grinch Stole Christmas. It's two showings. One starts at 5:30, the other at 6:00. And then we kick off the parade with a fun run and then the parade starts. And it's always, every year it's gotten better. So we'd love to see you all out supporting all of those entries in our parade and just get into the Christmas spirit with us. The next day we do have our, or, no, they changed.
Fourteenth, I think.
The fourteenth, we do have our family-friendly Winterfest event that is at the Boys and Girls Club. The Meridian Symphony plays on this coming Saturday. And so there's all kinds of events. There's a calendar on our website. Please take a look at that and join us in the Christmas festivities. Counsel, any other items under announcements? I am going to move to the podium and read a proclamation about Giving Tuesday. So, just a little bit about Giving Tuesday. This request was received from Jessica Ewing with the Meridian Canine Rescue. And one of the things that I think that Jessica noted in this request is our community is very giving. The philanthropy in this community is huge. And that support of the nonprofits that support and ours is that safety net for our community is huge. From feeding the hunger, from taking care of our pets, from taking care of those in a time of crisis, those nonprofits step up and fill that gap in a big way. And we're very fortunate and blessed to live in a community that gives generously. And today is Giving Tuesday. I'm going to ask our volunteers from the canine rescue organization to come up and join me as I read this. We have a number of nonprofits in our community and I think it's important to note that the Meridian Canine Rescue, they are an adoption program. And they, last year, found homes for more than 300 jobs, or dogs, jobs.
They're both.
They are a job. Maybe that was the slip I had. And they are enlisting the help of local dog owners to support their cause and it's a great one. This is a time of year that we need to remember our pets, especially as the weather gets cold and we all get wrapped up in the holidays. So with that, whereas Giving Tuesday launched in the U.S. in 2012 and was established as a national day of Giving Tuesday on the first Tuesday following Thanksgiving to kick off the charitable season. And whereas Giving Tuesday is a day where citizens work together to share commitments, rally for favorite causes, build a stronger community and think about others. And whereas it is fitting and proper on Giving Tuesday and on every day to recognize the tremendous impact of compassion and contribution in the city of Meridian. And whereas Giving Tuesday is a celebration of philanthropy, volunteerism, and community service where people give whatever they are able, whether it's funds or time. And whereas this year, many Meridian organizations are coming together to participate in this global day of giving, therefore, I, Mayor Tammy DeViert, hereby proclaim, December 3rd, 2019, to be Giving Tuesday in the city of Meridian and encourage all citizens to join together to give back to community in any way that is personally meaningful. And I would be honored to turn this over to our Meridian Canine Rescue Group as our thanks for bringing this awareness up on this day and ask you to say a few words about the organization.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
[applause] I'm Hillary.
I'm Jenna.
And we are proud to work at MCR. It's a great organization because every dollar that people give goes towards the dogs. We have, it's a really tiny organization, but we do so much with the help of our volunteers and our really passionate staff. We like to treat all the dogs as individuals. They all get individual training, enrichment, and it's just an awesome place to work and to go.
And we hope we can keep doing more and more, not only for the local community here, but for all over. So if you guys have it in your hearts this Giving season, make a donation to the Meridian Canine Rescue.
The dogs would really appreciate it, especially Russell. He's still available for adoption.
Yeah. Everybody's looking for a cute little dog.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
I should have just stayed down there and participated in MYAC's update. So our next item, oh, I'm sorry. You're not the next item, but you are important. Okay, item seven, future meeting topics. Any signups?
Madam Mayor, there were several signups. They're all referencing something later on tonight's agenda.
Okay, thank you. Now, Abby Tyson, come on up. Item 8A is our update from the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council.
Hey there, Tyson. How you doing, buddy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. My name's Abby Hutchins and I'm Vice Chair of MYAC.
I'm Tyson Dunn. I'm the Meridian High School Ambassador for MYAC. So this year, we participated in rake-up Meridian and we were able to go and serve for three hours in our community. We visited two locations and we had 20 people from MYAC in total show up and it was a blast. We were able to help people rake up their yards and serve them in any ways they needed. Then we also had our sticker shop campaign. So with this, we worked with the Meridian Anti-Drug Coalition and were able to place 8,200 stickers on bags that will be distributed around liquor stores in our area around the holidays. And these stickers are letting people know that just reading alcohol to minors in Idaho is a crime and just as a friendly reminder around the holidays.
And then for our community service subcommittee, we have been working on Operation Gratitude for the past two meetings. So what we've been doing is we've been making paracord bracelets and thank you notes for Americans who serve over the holidays. We do this with Operation Gratitude and they've sent out almost 2.5 million care packages since 2003. So that's what we've been doing for the past two meetings with that. And then recently, we've been planning our Point of Hope Run. It's a mental health awareness run. We've done this in the past as a suicide prevention run, but we changed it to Mental Health Awareness Run this year to be more inclusive and to recognize all of the mental health issues and support our community.
Then this next upcoming Monday, December 9th, we have our annual MYAC Christmas Party for members and alumni. Here we'll be playing some games and we'll be having a sock drive as well and we'll be having a great time and celebrating the holiday season.
Are there any questions?
And can you give a little background beyond the sock drive and why you're doing that?
Go ahead.
So we've done the sock drive in the past and I know one of our members actually brought this to us. It was, I believe, Girl Scouts were doing it last year, so they brought that to our attention and we really enjoyed it this past year, so we decided to do a gift exchange this year. Instead of people bringing gifts, they're going to bring socks so we can exchange those and then donate them afterwards so we can have more of a turnout.
That's awesome. And the alumni group, this is the first kickoff to reengage the alumni who have at one time been involved with MYAC and get them re-engaged. Ken Quarter has come back and said, well, he wants to be an alumni. He was too old to be a MYAC'er, but Ken and I will take on the alumni group and try and reengage them and they can act as mentors to our MYAC members that are currently serving. So we're excited for that. I know we have several excited alumni to come in and reengage, so. Any questions from counsel for our MYAC'ers? Yeah, you guys are awesome. We continue to be amazed by what you do. Next month, they'll update you on what their legislative priority is for the year. They just voted on it yesterday, but it's just too early to really talk about it. But that will be on the agenda next month. Thank you so much.
Awesome. Real quick to it.
Thank you.
We appreciate you being here. Thank you for that. So cool to have our youth engaged in their community, making it a better place for all. Okay, 9A under action items. First up is final plat for H2019-0117. Bill.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Won't go into the final plat too much. I just want to let, if the council and mayor concur with staff, we just received the applicant's response to the staff report late. The final plat is consistent with the approved preliminary plat, and so we ask that you approve this project as it is, again, consistent with the preliminary plat. We just didn't receive the comments within the time to keep it on the consent agenda. So if the council and mayor want me to go into the specifics of the development, I'm happy to, but if you're happy with just staff's concurrence with the applicant, we'll move on to the next item.
Okay. Counsel, any questions on this item?
Madam Mayor.
Do I have a motion? Yes, Ms. Mylum.
I move that we approve H2019-0017, final plat.
0117.
0117. What did I say?
0117.
Okay, well, I have a motion and a second to approve item 9A.
9A. 9A.
If there's no discussion, Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
All ayes. Item 9B is a public hearing for proposed ordinance 19-1856. This ordinance would amend Meridian City Code to increase the fine amounts related to off-leash dogs. And this is a ordinance change proposed by Councilmember Mylum. Ms. Mylum, do you have any comments?
Madam Mayor, we've talked about this, this is probably at least our third meeting on this topic, maybe fourth, and we're getting a lot of complaints. I was getting a lot of complaints, seeing, reading a lot of things on Nextdoor regarding people being attacked or chased by people with off-leash dogs or just simply afraid of them because they have children with them or they're elderly. And so we brought this forward and basically we want to change the fees that, right, currently they're $25 for a first offense, $50 for a second offense, $100 for a third offense, and we want to change them to $100, $200, and $300. So we want to have this public hearing so that we can get the input from our citizens.
Thank you, Ms. Mylum. This is a public hearing. Is there any signups? Mr. Clerk.
Madam Mayor, two people signed in for this topic, as well as one on the public forum. The first was Jack Long.
Thank you for joining us. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Jack Long. I've been a resident of Meridian for about 30 years, formerly on the north side of Eagle Road, now I'm on the south side of Eagle Road, 2893 East Green Canyon.
Thank you.
And I'm a dog owner. I found out about the proposal to increase the fines by accident by reading, of all things, public media nationwide. Don't know how you got your word out that far, but that's where I found out about it. Just one or two items briefly. I'm quite opposed to it for a number of reasons. I walk my dog in and around my subdivision and through Harris Park, around the high school, and the vacant lots that are there. I do not recall an occasion walking my dog where one or more individuals have had their dog off-leash, throwing the ball through the field, retrieving it, and so forth. Many of them are seniors. Some of the individuals, as I understand it, the leash law is a six-foot restraint of some kind to be coupled to the dog. Most everyone has leashes now that go out 20, 30 feet. So I just wanted to propose an alternative solution and I sent out an email. I tried to get everybody who was on the council a copy of the email, which lists the benefits of a radio-controlled device, an e-collar or whatever you want to call it, for management and dog obedience. I've had one on my dog for a long time. I've had it on dogs that I raised here in Meridian, primarily hunting dogs, but I've seen them used on other dogs as well. In my opinion, anyone who owns a pit bull should be required to have one. If it's seen in public, it should have an e-collar on it. That would resolve a lot of the issues that we have with dogs attacking, you know, biting. And then, you know, what were the conditions that brought forth the biting? When I lived on the north side of the freeway, I raised dogs and I had a female who had given birth to puppies and one of our neighbor kids came up on roller blades right into my garage, turned around and went out, and the dog chased her out and grabbed her on the ankle and, you know, put a hole in the boot, no blood. But I'm just saying, what are the circumstances under which all of these complaints come about? My personal viewpoint, and I think the viewpoint of many professionals, is that with a restraining device that really gets the dog to obey now, a lot of these, if not most of them, would be resolved. So I'd like to just bring it before the council. I did about a year ago. There was some interest from the council member. I can't apologize, but I can't remember who I talked to. He said, well, give us a professional, come forth and make a presentation. There were a couple that were willing but not able to get the time. So you might want to put that in the hopper for something to consider as opposed to burdening senior citizens with more taxes. Thank you so much. I appreciate the counsel.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from counsel?
But, Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
Not really a question or comment, but, well, it may just be an after topic. Yeah, I guess we discuss it after.
Okay.
Sorry.
Madam Mayor, your last sign-in is John Padden.
John, thank you for joining us. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Sure. My name is John Padden, P-A-D-D-E-N. I live on 2605 West Leonard Street.
Thank you. Mr. Padden, will you pull that a little bit closer to you?
Thank you. Hi. My message really is not so much for the council, but it's to people like Jack. And I strongly support stronger penalties for off-leash dogs. And, you know, there's a highly nuanced dance that people don't understand. And I'm sure Jack is a wonderful neighbor, he's a wonderful guy, and he may have very well-behaved dogs. But my experience is, and I do have two dogs that may have some molossir genes, pit bulls, as everybody likes to call them, they're fairly well-behaved, they're always on leash. But what people don't understand is when an off-leash dog, no matter how well-behaved, comes up to leash dogs, the leash dog understands he's at a severe disadvantage. And humans cannot always pick up these highly nuanced cues, but the dogs understand it. And the way I liken it is to, excuse me, is if you're handcuffed and you're thrown into a party and people you do not know are coming up to you and getting in your face, you're going to be very uncomfortable and you're going to react. So, and I think, I've had many experiences where the nicest guys with the friendliest dogs, Labrador Retrievers, just let their dog off-leash, come right up to my dogs. What am I going to do? I step off to the side of the path. I do everything to avoid, you know, the situation, it becomes impossible. Because if an owner doesn't have a six-foot lead on his dog, he has no control over the dog. And electronic devices are wonderful to talk about, but, you know, that's it. It's really not about how great your dog is. It's to coexist, humans and dogs have to be under control. Some people see a dog off-leash and they become, you know, terribly frightened. My sisters, they will not come into my house because I have dogs and I understand it. I have a handyman who had a terrible experience when he was a child. He, big burly guy, he, you know, trembles at the sight of a little dog. But in any case, that's really about it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
Madam Mayor, there's the last person wishing they wished to testify. Sorry. That was the last person indicating they wished to testify.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to provide testimony? Counsel?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
The ordinance or action is near the end of our agenda. The change, which I thought made some sense from Ms. Mylum, was this isn't creating any new restriction or any new limitation that didn't already exist. It was a minor adjustment and a fine amount trying to emphasize the importance on compliance with the existing rules that we have had for many years here, is your dogs need to be on a leash. Amongst some of the public comment that we got in writing that I thought was good for consideration, and I think Ms. Mylum referenced it also, was there are members of our senior community who have friendly dogs, but when these dogs nudge or jump on them with no ill harm or intent, it scares them at least, it can knock them down, and it makes many people disrelecting to go for a walk on the sidewalk because a friendly dog can jump on you. And maybe that's a remote situation, but it's one that's real for some people in our community. So I commend Ms. Mylum for bringing this forward, just to spark the emphasis on compliance with these existing rules.
Madam Mayor.
Mylum.
And I just wanted to mention, you know, the electronic collar, it may be something for the future council to consider. Tonight, what we're trying to do is not touch the ordinance, but that doesn't mean that it can't be amended. When this ordinance was drafted, made, it probably, maybe there wasn't the technology so easily available to residents to be able to get the electronic collars. And if it's a great way to control your animal and keep them from attacking people, then it might be something to consider adding as allowable type of leash. Obviously not the only allowable kind because we can't all afford that, but as an allowable type of enforcement for dogs. So since I won't be around, I'm just throwing that out there for you guys, the future council to consider. Thank you.
Any further discussion by counsel? Ms. Little Roberts.
As one that uses both a leash and an e-collar, I would proceed with caution on that and get some expert advice because my dog's fairly well-trained, but he's two years old and there's still things that he can come in contact with that he doesn't know how to react to and will react. And whether, I've got the e-collar on and zap him or not. So I would proceed with caution because there's dogs out there, especially if they perceive their master is in trouble, will take matters into their own hands if you don't have a way to physically control them.
Thank you.
Well, I, as mentioned, the ordinance will be read under 10, but at this point, if there's no further information needed, Mr. Burnt?
Just one last comment. I understand the intent behind increasing the fines. For, I guess, the last week or so, I've been pondering this a little bit and I would, I think our communications department, Shandy does a great job with messaging and informing the public with different policy issues that will be changing, that have changed or will change in our community, and this surely is one. Before I, for, in my opinion, before we raise fines, I would like to maybe do some public engagement to make, to see if that helps out. And also clarification on the amount because in the work, in the information that we provided in our packet, it was $500 up to $1,000. So I just wanted to clarify the difference between the numbers that was written in our packet as opposed to what's been talked about tonight. That's a big difference.
Well, then this would be a bargain, so.
[laughing] It's on sale.
If you listed it that much and you didn't get people showing up, then 100 to 200 to 300. 300 is not as severe. Mr. Neri.
No, I was just going to say, Madam Mayor, the ordinance that was published shows the amendment proposes the 100, 200, and 300.
There's the rushing.
Anything further? Well, council, you can continue this. You can close the public hearing. What is your desire here?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
We will close the public hearing for the proposed ordinance of 19-1856.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, to close the public hearing on item 9B. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes. Item 9C is a public comment regarding a draft ordinance, 19-1852. And this ordinance change was, and discussion, related discussion, was being proposed by council member Cavanagh. If you would like to kick this off.
Madam Mayor, similar to the previous item, it was before council. We've had this, I think, before. I think this is the third time. The goal of tonight's meeting was to hear from the public. For those that are in attendance and maybe aren't familiar, currently in Meridian, it is against the law to park a trailer or an RV in your driveway. It is allowable on public streets for up to three days. Myself, a member of code enforcement, some other stakeholders got together, discussed the idea, did come up with a clear consensus, came back to the body, provided a recommendation, which is to allow you to park these vehicles or these trailers on your driveway for up to three days. Council thought it was great to hear from the public before we render a decision to either move forward or to move on.
Thank you, Mr. Cavanagh.
Yep.
Mr. Clerk, any signed up to provide comment?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Four people signed in, two wish to testify. First is Renee Hanson.
Good evening, Renee. Thank you for joining us. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Renee Hanson. I live at 1435 East Tuttle Street in Meridian.
Thank you.
I've been president of the HOA for five years now. And it's consensus that we don't want this to pass because we've already had experience with it. Most of the people that, in our neighborhood anyway, that are wanting to park their RVs in the driveways, the RVs are too long and they block the sidewalks. So that's one major concern we have. We also have some homes that are not part of the HOA, so we wouldn't, in our community, and one of them in particular does an Airbnb on the weekends. So on the weekends, RVs show up and park in the driveway or on the street. And that's another issue that we have with moving forward, with allowing people to park in their driveways. I'm not exactly sure how this does affect HOA rules at the time, at this time. I get different answers from different people, so I know I have to go back directly to the source. But those are two of our major concerns at this evening, anyway, that we would not like to see people allowed to park RVs in their driveway.
I guess I would just say that we enforce city code. And the HOA, if it's different than city code, the HOA enforces their own CCNRs. Would that be a correct statement, Mr. Neri?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Just didn't want to speak as a, I practice an attorney only when I sit up here.
So the CCNRs would take precedent over the city?
Pardon?
So the CCNRs would take precedent over the city, so they can't say what the city allows this?
It would be a civil matter between you, the neighbor, and that generally is resolved by the HOA, or it goes to court. We don't get involved.
And that's why we don't want to see. That's a long path, to take it to court, when you can prevent it to begin with.
Mr. Palmer.
Well, with regard to our concern about blocking sidewalks, this would still, it would still be illegal to park in a driveway in a manner that would be blocking a sidewalk.
That's an ADA thing.
Right.
Right.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Appreciate you representing HOA. It's a really hard job. I always appreciate when folks that represent a homeowners association come before us. If I'm understanding you correctly, then your neighborhood would rather these vehicles park on the street than in the driveway?
We don't want to encourage them to park anywhere in the neighborhood. We do have our rules where, because the city allows them to park on the street up to three days. As an HOA, we don't, but you guys do. So they get three days on the street. Right now, they don't get anything in the driveway.
So, Madam Mayor, then a question for Ms. Neri. I know we're diving into, deep into HOA civics lessons. In this particular scenario, if somebody parks an RV on the driveway, it's incumbent upon the HOA to enforce their own rules, not the city, until it's been after three days?
Madam Mayor, Madam Council, that's correct. So the city wouldn't take any enforcement action outside of that three days, yes.
I guess my comment to that is the city has more resources and are better capable of enforcing the three-day rule. Where HOAs, it's going to be, start to be chaos.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, next is John Padden.
Name's John Padden. I live at 26...
John, can you pull that up?
Just wanted to be able to hear.
Bring it close, yes.
Name's John Padden. I live at 2605 West Leonard Street.
Thank you.
You know, this, I wish I had read up on this ordinance a little bit more before I got here. But I'm in support of anything that will keep RVs and trailers off the streets, off the lawns, off the yards, you know, the driveways. It's, in my neighborhood, you know, it doesn't seem to matter if your fines are $5 for the first offense or $1,000 if there's going to be no enforcement. And my experience is, it's been like whack-a-mole. I'll call the enforcement officer. He may or may not come out for a week. You know, he may not get back to me about, you know, what happened. Or at best, he goes on, knocks on the door, maybe tries to cajole the violator. I have yet to see a ticket issued. It's terribly frustrating. I mean, there are contractors, trailers, RVs, weeks at a time, months, permanently parked on the street. So I don't know what needs to be done, but it's an absolute eyesore. It's a hazard, especially at intersections, because of, you know, the visibility concerns and the way traffic just runs through our neighborhood and doesn't stop at stop signs. And, you know, they can't see what's around the corner. Again, I mean, I'm all for increased fines. And if you're going to try to determine what a decent fine is or what an appropriate fine is, maybe start with monthly costs for storage at local storage facilities. They run $65 to $130 a month. And if I have an RV, I'm going to park it on the street. And if I get a $25 fine, so what, you know? It'll just, maybe another few months, another neighbor will get angry, and I can prolong it. And, you know, what will be my monthly or yearly cost? I don't know. You have to, you have to make the, have to make a series deterrent. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. And maybe that's another consideration for the next city council looking at fines, if our code enforcement manager there is looking at that. So, there you have it. It was a great recommendation, though. Makes a lot of sense. Okay, Mr. Clerk.
Madam Mayor, those were the only two indicating they wished to testify.
Thank you. Is there any citizen who would like to provide? Yes, ma'am. Thank you for joining us. We appreciate that. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, Patty Pitzer, 2703 East Wayne White Drive in Meridian.
Thank you, Patty.
Council members, I am opposed to a three-day, even three days is too long to have RVs sitting on the street. Nowadays, with the new subdivisions going in, 27 feet is getting to be our average residential street size. An average RV is nine feet wide. And if you have a car parked on the other side of the street that's seven feet wide, that leaves you 11 feet for the cars to go through. It's just, RVs don't need to be on the street.
Thank you. The ordinance proposed change is about parking them in the driveway.
Oh, well, then I don't care if they're in the driveway.
That's all right. Would you prefer them in the driveway?
Yeah. Well, I mean, as long as they don't extend out. But I don't think that they should be there forever. I think you have storage bays. I think you have many ordinance, not ordinances, but HOAs say they have to be kept behind a fence. There's, I think, reasons for those HOAs. And I hope that they follow through with whatever their penalties are. So, sorry, I misunderstood.
That is all right. We love hearing comments here regardless.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
And I think her comments were useful, anyway, because we learned that she does not want them on the street. I think that it's important we reemphasize that it's not all just about, you know, giant class ARVs. This goes all the way down to you can't put a motorcycle trailer in your driveway. You can't put a utility trailer. You can't have it there for five minutes when you're moving to bring furniture into your house. It would have to be on the street. Obviously, we're not going around writing tickets for people that are actively moving into the house, but it's against the law. And this would provide a reasonable opportunity to utilize tools that many Idahoans have on their own property.
Any other wishing to testify? Yes, sir. Good evening. Thank you. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Greg Bosco, 207 West Spice Wood Drive, Meridian.
Thank you.
I had personal experience with arguing with HOAs and everything about this. What had happened is the HOA allowed us to have our RV in there, and we had plenty of room, not blocking anything. And then finally called the city. City came and said that we had to move it or put it behind an enclosed fenced area, which is, I understand. So, you know, I thought it was kind of like federal and state laws where it could be a little bit more restrictive. The HOAs could be a little bit more restrictive. So, anyway, so since it was that, I had to put that into storage. And, but it wasn't in a way, it wasn't blocking anything. So I think we should be allowed to have RVs as long as it's not blocking, I understand blocking a sidewalk or something like that. But if it fits in your driveway, if it's a pop-up trailer, if it's whatever you have, I mean, not something huge where it's hanging over a sidewalk. But I think, along with what you said, you know, being allowed to have something like that on your property without neighbors and everybody calling about that. So I think it should be allowed as long as it's not impeding on somebody else's, you know, or the public walkway.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any further testimony? Hey, Rich, do you have comments?
I do. Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Last time I was before you, I was given some questions that I couldn't answer, and I apologize for that. So I'm back here to answer them now. And the question that was most resounding was from Councilman Cavanagh about some statistics as far as number of these type of complaints that my folks have investigated. So for this year, up until October 31st, so the first 10 months of this year are numbers, we responded to or were made aware of over 190 violations of the section we're talking about, Uniform Unified Development Code 113C4. And those are the parking standards we're talking about in the driveway. So over 190 of them were investigated by my folks. And there were only three that we weren't able to get compliance on. Were able to move forward with our educational campaign and inform folks of what the current law was or is, and get them to come into compliance. So a lot of them, only those three that were sent off for review by the city prosecutor. And then the other direction that I was given was to come with a recommendation, a staff recommendation on it. And the police department's recommendation on this is to not amend the ordinance as proposed, or to just eliminate the requirements, because the amendment makes it impossible for us to enforce. So it would be a law on the books that we just couldn't move forward with enforcing.
Okay. Counsel, any questions for Rich? Or those in the audience, Rich is in charge of our code enforcement.
Does a great job.
Madam Mayor, I have a question.
Mr. Burn.
Hey, Rich, how you doing, ma'am? Question for you.
Good, thanks.
Out of those 190 that you went out and looked at with your code enforcement officers, do you have like a breakdown in regard to how many of those were in HOA subdivisions versus not?
I don't know. We don't, we don't track whether or not a property is part of an HOA or if they're required to fall into the CCNRs.
Any further questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Chief, any desire to weigh in?
Madam Mayor, counsel.
Madam Mayor, counsel. I think Rich pretty much covered it. Enforcement is, would be absolutely crazy for us, and we can't enter onto private property to enforce that. So putting a three-day rule in there is a moot point. So either allow them to park in their driveway or not. If you're going to mess with the law, then you need to just eliminate it completely and let the HOAs who have HOAs enforce it. The clarification that the one lady was asking, the answer is yes. That's the simple answer. An HOA can be more restrictive, but it falls on them to then enforce it. And what we find is some HOAs are really good at enforcing it, and then some don't want to take on that burden. Because if the person does not comply, it does revolve or resolve into district court. And some HOAs don't want to do that or don't have the resources to do that. So they can be more restrictive, but the burden falls on them to enforce it, not the city. I guess that's all I have. And we'll answer any questions that council has.
Thank you, chief. Counsel, any questions for Chief Levy?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Neri.
Madam Mayor, members of council, one other consideration, and Rich raised that, and I don't recall that it was much of the discussion. What you have on your agenda tonight is the parking requirements that the police enforce, but would also, if you're wanting to desire, allow recreational vehicles and that type onto driveways, which are considered to be the front yard setback, you have to change the UDC as well. Because the UDC standards is what code enforcement addresses, and that's what Rich is talking about. So part of your action, if that's your direction, is to then have planning bring forth that, which will have to go through the Planning and Zoning Commission for their, for their comment and their recommendation, to then come back to the council. That takes approximately three to four months or so for that process to get back to the council. So just wanted to be aware, there's two steps that have to be done to change this standard, not just the one that's in front of you tonight.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I don't know who can give me some understanding. This is, this is not the first time we've been talking about this. This process that we have set on was in part directed by the Planning Department to address this issue. So I guess I'm, I don't, and if the council doesn't want to move forward, then it's a moot point. But it is a little challenging to be through this process, three months in, and have somebody say, well, now you need to go through another process with P and Z. And I think from a process standpoint, I think it can be very clunky to the public to have this process play out, and then to say, oh, we're going to go through P and Z now. So I guess for future council and the staff, as we look at these types of things, there's got to be a more streamlined process so that we're not here at the end, and whether we move forward or not is irrelevant, that we're saying, oh, now you're going to have to go do this piece, when they could have definitely been done in tandem, so that our citizens see that we've got our act together. Because this feels like we don't know what we're doing. Because this feels like we don't know what we're doing. And I'm a little surprised this is now being brought to our attention tonight.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Neri.
So, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Kavanagh, every discussion we've had on this topic, the conversation has always been, do we want to move forward at all? So, the process of how to move forward wasn't ever discussed. But Mr. Everett has always raised that the quote section we're talking about that he deals with is a UDC. And that always has to go through the Planning and Zoning Commission. So, I'm sorry if it wasn't clear. But it hadn't been clear to me whether the council even wanted to move forward with this topic on whether to even consider a change. And that tonight was, I thought, from the last conversation, was to ask the public to weigh in on whether we should move forward with a change. We can change one part of the code and that will deal with some of it. But the specifics that you're talking about are in the UDC. So, I'm sorry if there was a lack of clarity, but we haven't had clear understanding of whether we even want to move forward. And Madam Mayor.
Which is why it is listed as public comment because there hasn't been a clear direction from council on the direction this wanted to go. Mr. Kavanagh.
And Madam Mayor, this process began as some changes to the UDC. That's where this process originated. So, it was staff who said that we needed to go this approach and work with code enforcement on it, which is why I took the direction from staff. So, it just feels very much like that the ball is bouncing and I'm having a really hard time trying to follow where it's going to land next.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Who drafted the ordinance that's on our agenda?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, so our, my office drafted that parking change at the council's direction, but we can't draft the UDC change. That has to come through the Planning Department. So, the UDC change, if that's your direction, still has to go through that process. That will aid some in regards to parking in general. But the specifics of parking on the driveway is still prohibited by the UDC until an amendment to that is done.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I have a question for police. So, if, say we allowed parking in driveways. So, now there's not a three-day rule or anything like that. It's allowed. It's up to the HOAs to deal with it. But it's hanging out onto the sidewalk and that's strictly prohibited. And there, it doesn't have to be proof of or moving. As far as enforcement, it's easy, correct? And then what would you do?
Madam Mayor, Counsel Mylum, that is correct. There is a parking ordinance that talks about blocking the sidewalk. But it is a parking fine, so it is a minimal fine. I don't recall what it is, but it's probably $25. But there is a mechanism for us to address that. But it would be blocking the sidewalk, not the fact that it's in the driveway. You'll see that often with long trailers that will extend into the sidewalk.
Madam Mayor, follow up. And so, does it have to block the entire sidewalk or does it have to be how many inches or feet into the sidewalk?
Madam Mayor, Counsel Mylum, well, now you're getting into what the law says and really it only has to be a quarter of an inch. But it has to be, it has to be reasonable. So, we will give it a set amount.
But it doesn't have to block the sidewalk. It could be just into the sidewalk a foot or something and you're going to get a parking ticket for that.
The law is reasonable and a common sense approach.
Question really was about enforcement being much simpler as the way that it was, this was written was unenforceable based on the feedback that we've got from you guys. So, this, if that were to happen, would be at least an enforceable change.
We currently enforce that now. It's easy to enforce. We'll show up, we'll take a picture of it, we'll write a citation. It's relatively simple.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Whatever the process ends up happening, so be it. But I guess my commentary on the idea is, I mean, we passed an ordinance that was complicated to enforce with the air compression brake ordinance and it restricted freedom. We have an opportunity here to increase freedom with a complicated to enforce ordinance. So, I think if we're willing to restrict it and have complicated enforcement, why the heck wouldn't we be willing to deal with the complicated enforcement when we're actually going to increase the ability of our citizens to be able to use their property?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
If I can answer, maybe move this thing along. I understand the distinction is it's not a choice. If there's a UDC portion that requires a change, we don't elect to voluntarily run that through P and Z and city council. That's a requirement. So, if that's the requirement, you're not choosing, no correlation to imposing or lifting impacts on freedom to this process we've got. So, I think that's the distinction. Where an air compression brakes doesn't necessitate a UDC text change, if what's contemplated here does, so be it. I think what I understand, if that's the case, then somebody provide direction and make a recommendation that we proceed to do X, Y, and C and have staff initiate the UDC text change to facilitate that change. That's what I hear. If that hasn't been done, if there's a desire to do it, then let's say that, that starts it. It probably doesn't answer the question of how we gobbled it to here in the first place, but it at least gets the ball moving. Sure. Something. If that's the desire.
And the desire's never had a formal motion to even know where council's weighing in on this. It was a desire to get public comment. Anyway, that was our understanding of it. And also to get further data from code enforcement. So, I guess I would ask for specific direction from council. If you want to see this change, to make a motion and the majority can decide how best to move this forward. And it would require processes outlined by Mr. Neri.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
So, I've really been avoiding trying to kick stuff down the road to the next council, but asking this group, this body right here, how to go forward on something that we're not even going to be around for to make a decision. It just seems if, is it going to be that long of a process and it's a couple more weeks? And it seemed, the people that are going to be making that decision, I think, should decide if it should go forward. But I don't know if Councilman Kavanagh should have to go through what he's going through.
Yeah, start all over. Mr. Burnt.
Madam Mayor, appreciate the discussion this evening in regard to this proposed ordinance. I think it's pretty obvious that code enforcement and the chief are not in favor of this. I think it would cause a lot of problems for them. So, I wouldn't be in favor of the proposed ordinance as is. But would be open the idea of maybe allowing parking in driveways. I don't know how I feel about that. I haven't had a lot of time to process that. But as far as the proposed ordinance is concerned, I think that I wouldn't be in favor of it.
Well, I don't have a problem recommending kicking this down the road. And that would be my recommendation, especially with the process. Irregardless, it would need to go through the UDC process along with a number of other things. But I think that it probably would be a good conversation for the council next month to process and see if there is a desire to add this to the UDC change list and then start that process. So, great recommendation, Ms. Mylum. I agree. And it feels good.
Here's one for you next year.
Okay. Anything further on this? And thank you to those that came to provide comment. So, tonight, we keep the ordinance the way it is. So, that's where we are tonight. Hey, item 9D is a public hearing for H 2019-0107. I will open this public hearing with staff comments. But before I do so, is there anyone here that is new to the public hearing process as we get into land use decisions? So, you all know that we start with staff reports. And the applicant has 15 minutes to provide a description of their project and proposal. Then, public hearing testimony is taken. You have three minutes each and there is a timer on the podium. There will be a bell that sounds at the end of three minutes. And if you don't hear it, I'll remind you. At the end of public hearing and testimony, we will ask the applicant to come up and summarize, answer any questions that were brought up during the testimony and then council will deliberate. Just keep in mind that there, on each of these items, there is a public packet that council has had the opportunity to review in advance of this meeting and that it will be part of their consideration as well. So, with that said, Bill, this is all yours.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Next item on the agenda is a UDC text amendment, kind of coincided with the last discussion. This is not city initiated. This is something that if the council recalls, there was an applicant, an application before you approximately two or three months ago called Silver Springs subdivision. And there was an instance where they could not get access to a common lot to a collector roadway, which caused them to create a cul-de-sac in excess of what the UDC allows. So, the graphic before you shows you that the way it's currently written in code, the city ordinance restricts cul-de-sac lengths and any series of dead-end streets to a length no greater than 450 feet. If you recall, with that particular project, the applicant was slightly over 450 feet, but there was no council waiver or no mechanism in code to allow council to grant that waiver. So, the only mechanism they have before you this evening is to change the UDC. And so, what we did is the applicant heard you. They went and researched the local jurisdictions in the Treasure Valley and brought forth some changes in the application. Now, when we went to the Planning and Zoning Commission, I mean, code changes are serious for us. We know it impacts development citywide, not just a specific development. And so, if we're going to support an applicant's request to change the code, we want to make sure we have evidence and we do our due diligence and our research when we're supporting or not supporting the requested change. And so, I wasn't specifically assigned to this. Caleb, actually, the Planning Division Manager, took this particular project and he did some extensive research and provided you that analysis in the staff report. But what we found is that we could find compromise with what the applicant was proposing. So, the applicant did go to Ada County, went to the city of Boise, went to the city of Kuna and did find some support for the 500-foot extension of cul-de-sacs. And then looking at fire code and also ACHD policy, they did support up to 750-foot cul-de-sac length. So, the text amendment before you this evening takes into account all of that information that was provided to us and looking at local and national jurisdictions. Now, staff did receive some public testimony after the Planning and Zoning Commission from the BCA, from our development community, and then also a law firm. And primarily, two, one of the design professionals and one of the developers would like to leave the 450-foot cul-de-sac length intact, but still have the ability to have some flexibility if you go over that 450-foot requirement. And then the other issue from the law firm and from BCA was the number of homes that we are limiting on the cul-de-sac. And I'll share with the council that there is no magical number for the number of homes taking access off a common or off a cul-de-sac. The intent behind it is to limit the number of homes on a cul-de-sac because we don't want, from our standpoint and the policies in our comprehensive plan is we don't want to have our subdivisions with a bunch of cul-de-sacs. It's intended to be interconnectivity and connecting community, not walling everyone off and having these long cul-de-sacs throughout the community. We need to have interconnectivity. We need to alleviate congestion on our collectors and our tarot roadways and let things function the way they are. And that's something that we had spoke to, to the commission at length, if you had a chance to review or watch the YouTube video. One thing that also came out from the commission was adding this as a graphic to the UDC, so it would support what we were doing with the proposed changes this evening. So, it'd show you how we'd want to limit the cul-de-sac length, the number of homes, and then having at least a pad connection when you do have a cul-de-sac length in excess of 750 linear feet. And we also shared with the commission how two properties could develop with interconnectivity and still not compromise the number of lots on that for a particular development. So, you can see here, on occasion, we have had developments that had streets that ended in cul-de-sacs. But you can see here that if you were to extend that roadway, you still get the same number of lots and still have connectivity between both neighborhoods with public streets. And then we also took that same example with you and took that Silver Springs development and showed you how it could work under current code. And still, again, you can see as you redesign it, there is a loss of lots. But even in the worst-case scenario, you're losing two lots. And the applicant just didn't want to do that. They decided to go ahead and pursue the UDC text amendment. So, going back to my first slide here, you can see here again, staff is amenable to the 500, extending the UDC text amendment from 400 feet to 500 feet and then giving you the ability to grant something greater if there's topography issues, steep slopes, railroad tracks, large waterways, maybe even a state highway. There are some circumstances that could prevent streets being extended. And this is similar language to what we currently have in our block length standards under the UDC subdivision standards. And then we wanted to also define how you would measure the cul-de-sac. So, you would go to the center of the turnaround for the cul-de-sac instead of all the way to the back edge of the cul-de-sac to give, again, the developer some flexibility as to how to measure that. So, with that, the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval, again, with these standards in front of you this evening. I did share with you the public testimony that we received. I have no new information to share with you and I'll stand for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Bill. Counsel, any questions at this time?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burnt.
Thanks, Bill. One question, and I know that it's fluid, these, you know, the lengths of cul-de-sacs vary from different municipalities, but my question, what's the average? I mean, there has to be like, sort of, there has to be some number, you know, like some type of guideline, so to speak.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, members of the council, that's something that we had alluded to in staff report. It varies greatly throughout the nation. Some cities don't even allow cul-de-sacs. Every street has to be connected. But in the valley, what we found is 500 seems to be the standard. And that's why we felt comfortable in the request that you see this evening. Certainly, it's within your purview to leave it as is or have some proposed changes. But the idea behind this code change isn't to allow, again, I guess the takeaway here is that the council still will have discretion and staff will have discretion as to whether or not a development should have more connectivity or less connectivity. And I think that was the direction of the council, is give us some tools that we can use on a case-by-case basis, not set the precedent that we're going to have cul-de-sacs in all of our subdivisions, multiple 750-foot long cul-de-sacs throughout the community. It was, again, giving you some options when there are certain site impediments that can't be met or complied with.
Any other questions at this time?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
Just one. Bill, what's the, what would be the reasoning behind proposed limitation B, the number of dwelling units? I know you referenced it and I get it, but there's reference in the application materials about fire code standards and you can have the dimensional standards of the applicable zoning. And those two could provide the ultimate cap on the number of dwelling units that could be eligible for an extended cul-de-sac. So, why would we cap it at 20 rather than utilize those other two?
Well, Mayor, members of the council, again, that's your purview to change that. I think our, when Caleb did his research, he didn't do a complete I think our, when Caleb did his research, he didn't do a complete sweep of the city, but there were a handful of cul-de-sacs that had more than 20 homes accessing off a cul-de-sac. There weren't very few. It's very limited circumstances where you're going to have that occur. And again, the idea is to try to discourage cul-de-sacs, not change the code to encourage more cul-de-sacs. But that did come up at the Planning and Zoning Commission. Currently, the fire code does allow up to 30 homes off a single access. And I think that's what the argument the BCA is using, is why can't we have up to 30 homes? Or let the design of the, and also from the attorney's office, why not let the code dictate what, how many homes you could have on that cul-de-sac? I would also mention to the council that ACHD has a limitation on the number of homes off a cul-de-sac, and it's based on vehicle trips, not necessarily the home. So it's up to 400 vehicle trips per day on a cul-de-sac is how they measure the length of the cul-de-sac or how they're going to restrict it. And again, you get typically an average of 10 vehicle trips a day from a single-family home, so that would give you a number of 40 homes off a cul-de-sac if you use that math. So again, it varies. It is arbitrary. We did pick 20 homes based on what's occurred in our community. We felt comfortable with that. But some of the language that the applicant proposed from Congress management, they said cul-de-sac streets will serve a maximum of 30 dwelling units if it's over 450 feet. So I don't see a situation where you're going to have more than 30 homes off a 450-foot cul-de-sac, given the dimensional standards. Is that a possibility? I guess anything's possible. We don't know all of the unintended consequences when we're looking at code. And certainly, that's, again, why we are very serious about it and we do our research, because we don't want these unintended consequences where we're getting a code in effect, and all of a sudden, we have that one project that comes through, and we didn't take that into account, and now we're stuck with a code that doesn't work. But that's some of the rationale is we don't want to encourage cul-de-sacs. We want to be flexible, but we also don't, that shouldn't be the norm, the new norm for Meridian, to have cul-de-sacs, these long cul-de-sacs. It should be almost like alternative compliance, case-by-case basis, and work with the development community as to, and still support our comprehensive plan for connectivity. Certainly, with the new comprehensive plan coming out, I think shorter block lengths make sense, because we do want to have more density and more diversity of housing products in the, it makes it more difficult. The longer block lengths you have, it's just you're going to get just a row of houses and have a lot of issues. So again, we're trying to build in that livability component into the community.
Okay, thank you. So the UDC text amendment does have an applicant, applicant, right?
It does, yeah.
It's the applicant here. Good evening, thank you for joining us.
Thank you for having me.
If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, my name is Dean Waite. I live at 4283 Neistrom Way in Boise.
Thank you, Dean.
As Bill explained very well, and as many of you probably remember, several months ago, we were going through options for the Silver Springs subdivision preliminary plat. And we came down to two options. And the one that we had to choose because of some, because of the way the code is written, was the less, the less-desired option by both us and the council. At that point, the council asked us to go back and to provide some flexibility by proposing an amendment to the text of the UDC code. That's why we've made the present, or the request that we have to go from 450 feet to 500 feet with some flexibility, up to 750 feet for special circumstances. Council member, I think it was Burton, that asked about the averages of other jurisdictions. Was that, so, when, in the research we did, Meridian is the most restrictive as it currently stands, at 450 feet. Starr was the only other community we found with 500 feet. Boise and Eagle were both, they don't have, they, like Meridian and like us, they prefer no dead-end streets and cul-de-sacs. We want connectivity, right? But Boise and Eagle both allow up to 750 feet, and that's more a fire code restriction than anything. ACHD, as was mentioned by Mr. Bill, was, their limitation is 400 trips, which is about 40 homes. And so, the proposal, to me, up to 500 feet makes complete sense and kind of fits with other jurisdictions. But the option to go up to 750 feet with council approval in certain circumstances, to me, answers the question that you provided us to allow you some flexibility in certain circumstances. And it's not to put cul-de-sacs everywhere and to make big, long cul-de-sacs everywhere. That's not our goal either. But it's to allow some flexibility for certain situations, like this subdivision that's bordered on three sides without access to any public right-of-way. That's all I have. That's our proposal, is to change from 450-feet limitation to the 500 feet with options up to 750 feet with those restrictions.
Thank you, Dean. Counsel, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, are there any citizens signed up to testify?
Madam Mayor, there is one, Dave Jorgensen.
Good evening, thank you for joining us. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
I will. My name is Dave Jorgensen. Address 14254 West Battenburg Drive, Boise, Idaho. And I am here with a couple of different hats. One is speaking to the history, as Dean just well articulated. We appreciate your approval of the Silver Springs subdivision, as I'm working with Todd Campbell with that effort. And we really were constrained on the northwest and south sides, only had access coming from the east side, including a large, two different homes actually had to meander the street around to accommodate the development design. I won't get into all the nuances, other than just say we recognize, on behalf of the BCA, we recognize the additional analysis that the staff has done. If the city council and mayor are so inclined to accept, I think there's some good guidance there to the city as to why you may want to go over the 500 feet. There are real constraints that the city will see. One of my comments is that as the city Meridian will see more infill-type development, and not that you have or have not approved your comp plan, but I do anticipate higher densities coming to the city in some of your specifically medium-density-type developments. You will have more and more of these challenges. The 450-foot constraint is really constraining. And you may or may not want to go to 750 feet. There may be reasons to grant that. But the 500-foot really is a minimum threshold for the rest of the Treasure Valley. I recognize that, as we're working, moving forward with this development, that we need to have a decision tonight so we can move forward with the construction of the subdivision. Otherwise, it's in a stall. And so we are asking for an approval tonight. However, the real big concern, which is what I want to emphasize here, is the number of homes being restricted to a maximum of 20 on a cul-de-sac. This development of Silver Springs was an R4 zone. You have a lot of R8s and R15s and other type of zonings in the city as well. An R8 zone, even at a 450-foot cul-de-sac or a 500-foot cul-de-sac, you can easily put in almost 30 homes on a, in fact, I think it's 29 is what I drew up, on a 500-foot-long cul-de-sac. And so the 30 seems to be, if the city wants to put a limitation on it, 30 should be the number. And I don't know why it would be less. The fire code is single access, no more than 30 homes. I don't know where else, where that number of 20 came from. I don't, I just can't, other than just it felt like it came out of the air, and it doesn't validate it or justify it by anything. And so, on behalf of the building contractors, if you do want to have a restriction to the maximum number of homes, we ask that you change that number from 20 to 30. And with that, I stand for any questions.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Thank you.
You're welcome, and I will take my last few seconds to say thank you to Councilmember Roberts, Palmer, Councilmember Mylum, and Mayor Tammy. I don't know if I'll see you until your term is up. Thank you for your service to the city.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Mr. Clerk, any other sign-ups?
Madam Mayor, no additional sign-ups.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to provide testimony? Yes. Good evening, if you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Madam Mayor, Counsel, my name is Lauren Bailey. My business address is 4824 East Fairview Avenue, Boise, Idaho. I have a handout here I'd like to pass the clerk.
He'll give it to the clerk, yes, thanks.
Just to clarify a couple of things, we did submit a letter, and I think there was a little bit of confusion on our end. We found out about this kind of last minute, and maybe that's a little bit our fault. But we just are concerned about the 20-lot requirement, minimum requirement, or maximum requirement, excuse me. We agree with the 500-foot cul-de-sac length. We're happy, I mean, I think the extension is 750. If the council approves it, it makes a lot of sense. It gives you the flexibility and leeway to look at each situation and make an informed decision. But requiring a 20-foot restrict, or 20-lot restriction, we just think is, as Bill indicated, arbitrary. If ACHD allows the trip count and there's no fire or emergency issues, we just, we feel like going to 30 makes much more sense. So what I provided you is just a sample motion, you know, just the changes we would make are in red. And that's, with that, I'll just stand for any questions.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
Nice to see that you remembered your business address tonight.
Yeah, thanks. It took me a whole week of practicing.
He read it off the piece of paper. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other testimony? Counsel?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
Did you go through, there's no other testimony?
No.
All right. Madam Mayor, just a quick comment. I think what Mr. Parsons was talking about with regards to the intent of the current and the new comp plan and connectivity and all of those principles still remain and are, I think, going to be important for us to remember as applications come forward. That being said, I wasn't necessarily comfortable with that restriction of 20 as well. It seemed to make sense that affording it flexibility. The draft language says, under that paragraph, it says shall serve. I thought, I don't know, may serve. I mean, it's not a requirement, that it's, it's sort of a capacity cap. Again, if the intent is to encourage flexibility in these really unique situations, I appreciate, and there's been no objection to sub-paragraph B and kind of the very narrow window where there might be the necessity for this exception, all seems to make good sense. So if sub-paragraph B on what's in front of us was changed to read cul-de-sac streets may serve a maximum of 30 dwelling units, it's compliant with fire code, it affords flexibility, and still seems to meet the intent of providing a solution in those unique situations that we had an applicant confronted with recently. So I would be comfortable going forward with that adjustment.
Okay. If there's nothing further, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
We close the public hearing on item 9D, H. 2019-0107. Second.
The motion is second to close the public hearing on item 9D. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all ayes.
Madam, oh, go ahead.
Bill, any comment from staff?
Madam Mayor, members of the council? No, I think that's, again, well within your purview to make the changes this evening. It's clear for what you want to do, so that's the direction of the council. Certainly, staff can support that and move forward with this code change.
Thank you. Mr. Burton?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move we approve item 9D, H. 2019-0107, amending sub-paragraph B to read cul-de-sac streets may serve a maximum of 30 dwelling units.
Do you have a motion and a second? Any discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
I was vigorously zooming around the city, trying to find one. And the last place I thought to look, for some reason I did, I found a street, a cul-de-sac, that has, according, well, at the time that the satellite picture was taken, has 29 houses on it, but it looks like 31 building lots, and it's in Spur Wing. So it's in kind of our premier neighborhood that we all wish everything was like, and it's got 31 lots on it. So I think there's definitely scenarios in which this makes sense. If we have to go to 30, I would rather not have a restriction at all, given that that's our greatest example. But certainly, 20 now makes a lot more sense, looking at this.
Mr. Clerk, you call roll.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mylum. Councilmember Burton. Councilmember Palmer. Councilmember Little Roberts. Councilmember Cavanagh. Councilmember Burton.
All ayes, most carried. Item 9E is a public hearing on H. 2019-0118. We'll open this public hearing with staff comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Next application before you is the Hathaway Warehouse Vacation. The site is located at 2198 and 2262 East Franklin Road. The applicant is here this evening to request a reduction to the 15-foot landscape and irrigation easement along the south portion, or, excuse me, the north boundary of this particular property. This property was approved with the Sparrow Hawk Development in 2003. At the time that it came through, there was a PUD, and the code in effect at that time required that the applicant buffer commercial uses from industrial uses where there wasn't a buffer developed with the industrial property. So they were hit with this requirement because of a previous code. So staff did receive, the applicant intends to, the applicant's actually been approved for a property boundary adjustment to consolidate the parcels into one property so that they can construct a 20,000-square-foot flexible on the site. The city is in the process of reviewing and approving that certificate of zoning compliance and design review application for this building once this vacation is acted on this evening. So currently, the current code does not require a buffer between commercial properties and the industrial property. Staff did receive written testimony, or a written letter, from the Nampa Meridian Irrigation District, who is the easement holder over this 15-foot easement, and there are no facilities in there, so they are comfortable with the reduction in the landscape buffer. And so the current code only requires that there is a five-foot, if there's parking adjacent to that boundary, that there's only a minimum five-foot landscape buffer required. So that's why they're going from 15 down to, removing 10 and going down to five. Staff did receive written testimony from the applicant in agreement with staff's recommendation to reduce the buffer. And with that, I'd stand for any questions you may have.
Counsel, any questions? Okay, it's the applicant here. Mr. Clerk, any citizen signed up?
Madam Mayor, yes, there were two sign-ups. Neither indicated they wished to testify. I believe it was the applicants.
Is, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to provide testimony on this item? Counsel, any questions for staff or the applicant? If not, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I move that we close the public hearing on 9E.
I have a motion, second to close the public hearing on item 9E. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I move that we approve H. 2019-0118.
I have a motion and a second to approve item 9E. If there's no discussion, Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mylum. Councilmember Burton. Councilmember Little Roberts. Councilmember Palmer. Aye. Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Burton.
All ayes, most carried. Item 9F is a public hearing for H. 2019-0111. I will open this public hearing with staff comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Next application is the Waterwalk Rezone application. The site consists of 5.1 acres of land, zoned IL, and located on the west side of North Eagle Road and the east side of North Olson Avenue, just north of East Franklin Road. This property was annexed in 1997 without a requirement for a development agreement. The current comprehensive plan designation for this property is commercial, and the rezone from IL to CG is consistent with the flume designation of this property. And the site is currently vacant, commercial property, ready for development. So the applicant is here to rezone the property, again, from CG to, or, excuse me, from IL to CG. Conceptual development plan was proposed. Conceptual development plan was proposed for this property, but it is conceptual at this time. It does show two hotel sites on the property and associated parking. The applicant has also indicated that office uses are also contemplated on the site but aren't depicted on the plan. Access to the site will be proposed from a local street, which is North Olson Avenue, which is along the west boundary and already constructed and provides connectivity to Franklin Road. No direct lot access is proposed to Eagle Road, which is consistent with the UDC. So because the site plan is conceptual at this point, the staff is not recommending that this site plan be tied to the new development agreement for this property. We anticipate some future changes in discussions with the applicant. They want some additional time to modify the concept plan. So at this point, we're not requiring them these elevations or the site plan before you to be tied to that development agreement. And the DA also, through the DA, we're also going to restrict the uses on the site to office, hotel, retail, restaurant uses only, and if any other uses are proposed for the site, they would have to come back and propose a DA modification and modify, provide a concept plan and a new layout for this body to take under consideration. Testifying, the commission didn't recommend approval to you with those changes, not tying the concept plan or elevations to the new DA. Dustin Holt, the applicant's representative and developer for the project, spoke, testified in favor of the application, and written testimony was provided by the applicant's representative in agreement with the staff's recommended DA provisions. The only item of discussion by the commission at the hearing was the agreement that this makes more sense as commercial versus industrial property. Since the Planning and Zoning Commission, there have been no changes or written testimony on this particular application. With that, there are no outstanding issues with you. Staff and commission are both recommending approval, and I stand for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Bill. Counsel, any questions for Bill? It's the applicant here this evening. Thank you for joining us. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Dustin Holt, 211 East Broadway, Salt Lake City, Utah. Madam Mayor and council members, thank you for your time tonight. I feel right at home with the elf on the shelf here. I've got young children, so...
Thank you. You know, he has a name. His name is Zinger.
Zinger. Okay. My, my children would appreciate Zinger.
Well, Zinger's been named by the community, and he's going to be all around the city the next 24 days or 23 days, and so follow him on Instagram and Facebook. Thank you for the plug. That just worked really nicely.
That was perfect. [laughing] I want to thank you for your service. I'm not part of your community. In my role at Dusty Baker, I'm before appointed bodies or elected bodies such as yourself, monthly, a lot of times weekly, and in the off case, like this week, two times in a week. I have a little bit of an understanding of what it takes for you to serve your community, so thank you very much, from my world to yours, for your service to this community. I also want to thank Sonia. I know that Bill has stepped in for her tonight, but Sonia and I met and talked about this site a little over a year ago on my first visit. I appreciate the direction that she's given us, her thoughts, her input. I appreciate Bill stepping in for her. I also appreciate the Van Acker family for working with us on this site, Brad Miller and, and now subsequently, the Alder Properties Group, but we're very appreciative of that. We have reviewed the staff report. We're in full agreement with the staff report. I think just a couple of things to note. We're also acquiring the two lots south of this property, so we're acquiring a little over seven acres from the, the property owner. The two lots adjacent to the south are already zoned commercial, and so this brings a cohesive zone to all the property that we're acquiring. As Bill mentioned, we do anticipate a cohesive plan coming forward to you for a site plan and a DA inclusive of those lots. We did not want to go to the extent of doing that if this rezone is something that didn't fit within your willhouse or your vision. So that's part of the reason what we've shared is conceptual. It will be revised and tweaked. I was on the phone even as early as this afternoon with Waterwalk and the Hotel Group. There's three different prototypes that they have. One is a single building and 109 keys. Another is two buildings, which is what you see here, and it's 153 keys. So we're still working, waiting for a star report and a couple of market analysis to come back to define the exact prototype. Along with Bill's, what Bill mentioned, we're hopeful that when we bring a final site plan forward, that we might be able to integrate office, medical office, retail, and even some use, have those uses with shared parking. Office and hotel generally are great synergistic parking uses. You get a lot of daytime use in the office and nighttime for the hotel. We're, we know that we will never have access onto Eagle. We are hopeful in that process that a ride-in, ride-out might be something that we could work for off of Franklin. We know there's a median there in the middle of Franklin, but thinking through just overall internal flow of that site, that is something that is in the back of our minds and being worked on in the plan. As was, as was mentioned, staff recommended this for approval. The Planning Commission unanimously forwarded a positive recommendation, and we appreciate you hearing this matter and would respectfully request your approval on this matter tonight. If there's any questions, I'm happy to address them, otherwise, I'll sit down.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Clerk.
Madam Mayor, we had one sign in. They did not indicate they wished to testify.
Okay, and you want to name them then?
They do not.
Oh, they do not. Is there anyone who wishes to provide testimony on this item? Okay? Thank you. You're a quiet group. You're waiting, right? Okay. Counsel, any information needed from the applicant or staff? If not, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Ms. Mylum.
That we close the public hearing on item 9F.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ms. Mylum.
Oh, Madam Mayor.
I just thought I'd call on you.
Sure. I wasn't sure if there was going to be any discussion. I move that we approve H 2019-0111 as presented by staff, I think, which includes the type of the commercial that can be on that property.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item 9F. Any discussion? And Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
All ayes, most carried. Item 9G is a public hearing on H 2019-0098. I will open this public hearing with staff comments.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Next item is the 840 East Eustick Annexation. The site consists of 2.29 acres of land, currently zoned RUT in Ada County, and is located, again, at 840 East Eustick Road, which is on the north side of Eustick Road between Meridian and Locust Grove Streets. There is no history on this particular property. The current, the comprehensive plan flume designation for this property is low-density residential, which is three units or less to the acre. The applicant is here this evening seeking annexation because with the road widening project of Eustick Road, they actually lost services to the home, so right now it's inhabitable until they can connect to city sewer and water. The applicant's actually rehabbing the home as we speak through Ada County to try to get that process going, and he has actually entered into a hookup agreement with the city to, to connect to those services predicated on annexation of the property. Originally, when the applicant submitted his application, he had requested to annex in with the R4 zoning designation, because the applicant is not proposing any development at this time. Staff was more comfortable with downzoning him from an R4 to an R2 zone. We did discuss that with the applicant, and he testified at the Planning and Zoning Commission that he was amenable to rezoning this or annexing this property in with an R2 designation because there are no development plans at this time. We have put in the hearing outline this evening, if you, if the council is agreeable to the R4 zone as requested by the applicant, that you at least continue this project out and allow staff time to at least bring back some DA provisions to coincide with the requested R4 zone. With the R2 zone, staff is not recommending a development agreement with the proposed annexation. The Planning and Zoning Commission, again, did recommend approval of the R2 zoning. Speaking in favor of the application was Scott Lamb, who is the developer applicant represent, or applicant of this property. He also provided written testimony in agreement with the R2 zoning as recommended by staff. And then we had Alicia and John Villanova, Villanova, providing written testimony. Key issues of discussion by the commission was the R2 zoning versus the R4 zoning, and really, in the code, is, the difference is dimensional standards. An R2 zone is larger than an R4 zone, and you need greater frontage improvements for the R2 zone versus the R4 zone. So really, an R4 can work, and R2 is probably the preferred zoning by staff, just because there is no development plan at this time. So, again, there are no outstanding issues for the city council this evening, and staff has not received any written testimony on this application since the Planning and Zoning Commission. Staff is recommending approval of this application, along with the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission with the R2 zone, and with that, I'll stand for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Bill. Counsel, any questions? The applicant here. Do you have any comment?
No, not really. I'll tell some stories, but... Hi, I'm Scott Lamb. Bill and his team were just great to work with, and I'm willing to do the R2 zone, that's totally fine. I think if, if I don't have to do a development agreement, I think it saves me $310 in fees from the city. So I'm all for saving $310, and so...
Merry Christmas.
Based on, based on the rest of the meeting here tonight, though, I am thinking that I may open it up for RV parking on those two acres, and maybe do flyers out in the subdivisions with the HOAs, with the HOAs approval, so, anyway, thanks.
That's lovely.
Yeah, I think we're, I think we're, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, any questions? Well, thank you for joining us.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for having me.
Merry Christmas.
Yep. Merry Christmas.
Mr. Clerk, any citizen signed up to testify?
Madam Mayor, there were no signups.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing, is there anyone who wishes to provide testimony? Mr. Burnt?
I move that we close the public hearing for H-2019-0098.
Second.
I have a motion, second to close the public hearing on item 9G. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All ayes, most carried.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burnt.
I move that we approve H-2019-0098, inclusive of the R2 zoning designation.
Second.
I have a motion, second to approve item 9G with the R2 designation. Any discussion? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Burnt.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
All ayes. Item 9H is a public hearing, continued from November 12 on H 2019-0099. I will ask for staff comments at this time. This is a continued public hearing.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. As you alluded to, Mayor, this was continued twice, from the October 22 and November 12 city council hearing. The, the main reason for the continuances was to allow the applicant time to provide revised plans to address staff's concerns in the staff report regarding the density on the site and the open space proposed with the development. I would mention, too, the city council, and I apologize for getting the memo and the revised plans out to you late yesterday evening. As you know, we're understaffed and getting the plans, I got the plans on Friday. Applicant reminded me that, asked if I got the plans. I said yes, and I got into pre-application meetings and interviews to try to get new team members to join the team, and with the shortened work, we didn't have an opportunity to get that memo out to you in a timely fashion, so apologize to the residents that are here as well. It wasn't the intent to, to get those plans out for their review, but it was my understanding and communications with the applicant that they were going to have subsequent neighborhood meetings and share the revisions with the neighborhood, so they were informed as to what the changes were going to be moving forward. And so we took that and hoped that that was shared with the community as the applicant was trying to work through some of their concerns. So I just wanted to go on the public record and, and state that there was a delay of getting those plans to the clerk's office. But this, this particular property, I do want to spend some time on the history of it because it's, it's morphed over from its original approval. And this application this evening has two components of it. One, it has three development agreements governing the site, which is an inefficient way of administering development in the city of Meridian. Two, one of the DA has an error in it, so we have to clear, clean that up. And three, the applicant wants to increase the density on the site. So my first part of the presentation, I am going to spend a little bit on the history because I think it's important to note to the council that when this property was originally annexed into the city in 2016, the intent was always to have density on this site. This body approved a development agreement, a 14-acre site to develop with 312 multifamily units. In 2017, the applicant came back before you, not this applicant, but a different developer, different applicant, came back before you and said that that was too much density on this site. We needed to rezone this property, reduce our site. They changed, did a conditional use modification, did a DA mod, did a new subdivision, and they actually reduced the density from the 312 that was recently approved down to 112 units. And those are the site plans that are before you currently. So right now, as stated in the DA, the applicant has the first phase under construction with 112 units, as you see before you this evening. That's currently under construction. What they're wanting to do this evening is increase that density from the 112. Originally, it was 204, but the staff report that was print, after the staff report, the applicant saw staff's changes, and they went back to the neighborhood and worked with staff to try to come up with a revised plan to add more open space, address our parking concerns, and provide more amenities for the development, and then also work with the neighbors on some of the traffic concerns that they were hearing from them. So originally, when this was submitted, they were proposing 204 units. Our original recommendation, or how it's currently written in the staff report, is to reduce that from 204 down to 192. Well, the memo this, that I prepared for you yesterday, shared with you the revisions, and, again, it was my intent that this was shared with the neighbors at the neighborhood meeting. In discussions with some of those neighbors, they were privy to these plans, so I know some of them have seen it, but I don't know if all of them have. So the plan that's before you with the revisions and what I tried to capture in the memo for you is the applicant's actually reduced the density from 204 down to 196. So again, staff wanted 192. The applicant came back to 196. And the primary change is that, and I'll explain those to you as well, is one is the entrance off of South Mulvado Way actually shifted to the south. So previously, it was located in this area, if you can see my cursor. They moved that to the south, so it'd be farther away from the intersection to allow for future stack, better stacking, and try to deter traffic from exiting out onto Mulvado Way, at least the, the multifamily traffic. ACHD has requested the applicant to do a traffic warrant analysis, and that information has been provided to them, but we do not have any information from ACHD as to whether or not. They need, requested additional information, but they were comfortable with the city taking action this evening, and I wanted to make sure that you had Kristi Little's email in your packet this evening, so that's some new information that was, the clerk updated, uploaded this evening for you to take under consideration. The applicant did lose units, which actually moved the tot lot to a more central location within the development. It was previously over here, within this 50-by-100 area, relocated it over here. The applicant did add, open the dog park area for more open space, and then also allowed them to get another 50-by-100 open space area here along the southeast corner of the development. And then staff also had a condition that they provide a 25-foot landscape buffer along this portion of the development, so it would provide a better... this portion of the development, so it would provide a better transition to the adjacent single-family homes on the south boundary. And that's really what predicated the continuance, was to give time... The applicant time to change the plan and meet some of the changes that staff had recommended in the staff report for you this evening. They also did provide some revised open space exhibits and revised landscape plans to show you how that works as well. So looking at this proposal, I mean, this is one step... So the applicant first has to get the DA modification approved, and then subsequently go before Planning and Zoning Commission for CU mod to allow the increase in density as well. So it's a two-prong approach. They need the DA mod before they can get the CUP mod approved. And the UP mod is approved for this week's Planning and Zoning Commission to hear, again, the same revised plans, and those have been forwarded on to the clerk to include in as part of the CU packet for the commission. So those plans have been already set to them. So in my memo, and then the elevations are going to be similar to what was previously approved with Phase 1. So this is a little unique as well, is that the MDA also includes the area on the east side of Movado Way. So the DA mod that's before Planning and Zoning Commission only includes the western portion of the site and the expansion of the Phase 2. But it's part of the DA mod this evening. The applicant's also proposing a commercial building and then a future townhome development, which will require another rezone of the property and subdividing of the property. So it's only conceptual at this point. The applicant will have to go back before Planning and Zoning and City Council for the rezone in the plat to do the townhome portion of the development along the east side of South Movado Way. So currently, I think in that memo that I provided to City Council late last evening, I've had a chance to look at the revised plans. Staff is supportive of the changes proposed by the applicant. And so, looking at the requested DA changes, I noted to the council that if you support the DA modification this evening, I would request on this exhibit that item number three be stricken from the DA provisions, because the applicant has provided... Has lost density, adjusted their parking plan, and added more open space, and those were some of the primary concerns with the application. And then item four on this graphic, currently, we have them restricted to 192 multifamily units. We would request that that would increase to 196, as shown on the revised site plan. Looking at the public record, it appears that there's quite a bit of opposition on this particular project. I counted 37 before I came to the hearing this evening. Looks like most of the opposition, again, is in regards to the density of the project and also the access to Movado Way and getting in and out of that development. Neighbors are concerned that the congestion is getting more and more difficult to get out of there. I think this body remembers when Movado came through, there was some discussion about punching another access point to Cloverdale at that time. And through the public hearing process and working with ACHD and the developer, it was determined by this body and ACHD that that was not necessary to adequately serve this development. So this site actually has a connection point to Overland Road, and there's two connection points through Silverstone Business Park that takes you out to Eagle Road, and one of those is a signalized intersection. So when that application came through, it was found that there was sufficient access to and from this development. So again, staff is recommending approval for this application this evening, with the modification as stated. And with that, I'll conclude my presentation and stand for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Bill. Council, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Bill, can you go over one more time the number of units when this was first annexed, and then with the revision, and then... You have 196 now.
Absolutely. I know it's... The site's a mess, to be honest with you. A lot of errors happened, so we've got to get it corrected one way or another. But essentially, when it came through in 2016, the applicant had 14 acres of the site, and they were approved with a CUP and a DA for 312 multifamily units on 14 acres. The applicant, at the time, was trying to sell the property and wasn't able to retain a buyer for the 312 units. They couldn't get anyone to buy it. So in their mind, they felt it wasn't a profitable project. So they came back, went through the Movado Greens, brought back a new plat, rezoned it, carved out a five-acre piece to develop 112 multifamily units, which is the first phase, which is basically the western half of this graphic in front of you. And again, that's under construction. They've gotten approval on that. They're moving dirt and going vertical on that. So really, this is a Phase 2, which is a four-acre piece here, to increase that from 112 up to 196. And then, of course, as I alluded to, there will be a commercial component to it, and then a townhome component as well, which will come back at a later phase.
Thank you.
So, Bill, the 312 units was not on this piece?
Yeah, correct. Madam Mayor, members of the council, this piece was always intended for commercial. So it was the 312 units. We had some commercial pad sites, and then it transitioned to the Collector Road, South Movado Way on the east. So it was going to be 312 units, retail, and then retail on the opposite side, and then the roadway. I mean, if in the staff report, Silverstone is an employment area. It provides a lot of retail. It has a lot of commercial. So again, when we analyzed this DA modification application and the conditional use permit modification, we felt like a commercial component wasn't as necessary as a higher-density residential component, because we want people closer to their employment center, to their jobs. If they can live here, hopefully, they can bike, walk, use the Collector Road and go to work, and not have to go on Overland Road. That was the intent when we look at mixed-use regional areas. We want densities between 6 and 40 dwelling units to the acre. When you take this piece and you roll it into the overall Movado development to the south, you're nowhere near... You're probably eight to 10 dwelling units to the acre. You're not anywhere... You're within that density range of the mixed-use regional. But again, we tried to put that nexus for you in the staff report, because we knew some of the neighborhood opposition was coming. But we want you to understand... I think everyone understands that we want residential close to employment. So we do try to reduce congestion, and we keep people in our community working. And that's the justification of why we support this Phase 2 and additional density on this particular project.
Well, I appreciate the clarification. I just wanted to make sure, because I didn't feel that was articulated. Okay. Any further questions from council? Is the applicant here? Good evening. If you'll, please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Elf Zinger. My name is Deborah Nelson. My address is 601 West Bannock in Boise. Also here with me tonight for the applicant team is Rob Powell, the project engineer... Or, excuse me, the project architect with Dave Evans Construction. And Rob may jump in as well with some additional comments and answers to your questions. Thank you to the city staff for their continued review of iterations of these plans and their support of the revised plans that have been submitted. The applicant is in complete agreement with the staff's conditions of approval at this Just want to start with a little additional project overview. Some of it's a repeat, just to make sure we are all on the same page, but I'll try not to belabor the points that were asked about. This project has changed a couple of times, obviously, since it's been approved and originally annexed, as the owners and the city have tried to figure out what is the best product mix here. The site was originally approved for 312 apartment units and additionally, commercial. And then in 2017, some of that commercial was changed to some single-family homes, and 112 units were left. The commercial hasn't taken hold. While the single-family is building out and the apartments are under construction, as was noted, the commercial is still sitting there vacant. So this applicant has a proposal to change a portion of that unutilized commercial back into residential, with 84 new apartment uses and 10 new townhomes. This will create more housing, more amenities will be added to the site, and it will decrease traffic impacts. To accomplish this, we need a DA modification. That's the narrow application approval we have before you tonight. But as Bill noted, we have a whole series of applications that have to go forward before this change can actually happen, including with the Planning and Zoning Commission on the CUP modification and future applications for the townhomes. Also, as Bill noted, this is a great location for some higher-density apartments and residential to be added, because there's already great connectivity with employment and commercial opportunities right next door. Silverstone Plaza is immediately to the west, with 943,000 square feet of office and commercial. This includes employment opportunities with the city call center, power engineers, bodybuilding.com, T-Mobile, plus restaurants and retail right there next door. The Eldorado Business Campus is the next property to the west, along with other commercial at Eagle and Overland. There's hotels, more retail, and restaurants. St. Luke's Hospital is a mile and a quarter away. That's a walk or a short bike ride from these homes. The requested modification will provide needed rental and for-sale housing for city residents with a diversity of price points and housing types. Expected rent to be as low as $1,000 per unit here, ranging up to about $1,400. The apartments and townhomes provide a nice transition with the neighboring uses between the single-family to the south, the commercial and the office to the west, and right in the middle of the existing apartments and the proposed commercial that remains right along Overland, a principal arterial. Turning to the site plan. This Phase 1 apartments, just on this west side of this line, this is what's being built out now. That's the 112 units. We're proposing to add 84 one- and two-bedroom units right here. That will replace the space that would accommodate approximately 47,000 square foot of commercial area. The townhomes are down here in this corner, the southeast, replacing the space that would accommodate approximately 5,000 square feet of commercial. The overall density of the apartments will stay basically the same. I mean, it's actually a slight decrease, from 19.98 to 19.66. The 84 additional apartments will be added in a way to create an integrated apartment And that's what you can see from the site plan here. The site plan has gone through a number of changes, as Bill noted. The applicant has held four different neighborhood meetings, and they've made changes in response to neighbor comments and comments from city staff and also from ACHD. Some of these include eliminating an entire apartment building from the southeast corner, which had eight units. They moved buildings and other improvements that were along the southern border further north to create a larger buffer. They moved the access point on Movado Way, and Bill talked about that, to be further south. And they relocated amenities and parking, creating more separation to the existing single-family residents and from Movado Way, which is their primary entrance. The site has great amenities. With this modification, we'll be expanding the clubhouse, adding a pool, a dog walk area, and a 50-by-100 open lawn area. Other existing amenities include the clubhouse with fitness facilities, playground, and sport court. The parking on this site exceeds city code requirements. It's also important to note that these apartments do not include any three-bedroom units, and the city code requires the same amount of parking for two-bedroom and three-bedroom units, although sometimes three units can create actual demand at a little higher. And that won't be a problem here, because we don't have any three-bedroom units. So we will be well within the usage that's contemplated by your city code, and we even have more spaces that's required by your city code. And based on the applicant's experience with similar products, they believe that the amount required by the city code will meet their market demand as well. There was a concern raised by neighbors about spillover with parking along Movado Way. However, that's a residential collector, and there will be no parking allowed along that street, so that should not be a problem there. Transit's also available to serve this property, and it's very walkable and bikeable to the nearby businesses and employment. The site includes extensive landscaping, buffers, and open space. There's a 25-foot-wide buffer along the southern border that will have significant landscaping between these apartment buildings and the existing single-family uses. They will install mature trees from the beginning with 3-inch caliper autumn blaze maples and 10 to 12 feet tall Colorado blue spruce right from the beginning. The site includes more than two times the amount of open space that is required by your city code for this type of project. Over 100,000 square feet, and only 49,000 would be required. There is great pedestrian connectivity with sidewalks throughout, and with sidewalk connections extending up to Overland and out to Movado Way, and also a bollarded emergency access that's to the south, providing additional bike and pedestrian connectivity there. And there is a remaining commercial pad that would accommodate approximately 12,000 square feet, providing some additional mixed-use opportunity. We think it may be a good site for a medical office building. There are two access points to the apartments. The primary access is directly onto Overland Road, and then there is a second access onto Movado Way. In response to the comments from ACHD and the neighbors, that is why we moved this down here. We've also agreed to install traffic calming devices throughout the middle portion and west of the access... Excuse me, east of the access out to Overland Drive, so that it discourages cut-throughs, so the apartment users are not, you know, further incentivized to come out to Movado Way. We want to discourage that cut-through, so they're more incentivized to use the direct access onto Overland, which is a closer distance for many of the buildings, anyway. The project and the area has great connectivity to neighboring businesses. Oh, Bill, you may need to help me. Thank you. Showing a lot of the streets that are around this neighborhood, and that was discussed a bit by Bill already, with the connections out to Eagle Road. Also, the trips for residential are less than commercial. And if we just focus on, for example, this area that we're about approximately four acres, where we're replacing the commercial uses that would accommodate approximately 47,000 square feet of commercial, and we're putting 84 new units. If you just use the ITE standards for trip generation for those two uses on that one area, we would generate with 84 apartments, 457 trips there, and a pretty conservative mix, actually, of commercial, not even going all retail, which is very high trip demand, but using a mix of medical office, general office, and retail would be 1192. I mean, that just gives you a scale of the... And I know you guys know this already, that commercial just generates a lot more trips than residential. ACHD has recommended approval. ACHD's conditions of approval do require us to submit that signal warrant analysis. It's actually not due until we pull a building permit. That's the trigger by which it has to be submitted. But we have gone ahead with that. We've hired Kittleson, and that is in progress now. And we will comply with the ACHD conditions of approval. In addition to the reduction in trips, other benefits with converting from commercial to residential on a portion of this site includes that commercial would inevitably have signage along the frontage of this same four-acre property along Overland. And we heard a lot of complaints from the neighbors worried about the entrance and visibility of how it looks coming into their main entryway. And the landscaping that will be provided on the frontage of these buildings will certainly be more attractive than you might find from commercial signage. Also, commercial buildings could be up to 65 feet tall in this zone, could be closer to the residence, where we've provided that 25-foot buffer and that extensive landscaping on the south. We also heard some concerns about just impact on property values to place multifamily right next to single-family. However, this is commonly done, and appropriate creates a nice diversity of uses, actually can create value, because you don't have all of the same housing type. And so we just pulled together a few examples... And so we just pulled together a few examples. Here in Meridian, you are familiar with the Paramount neighborhood, where they put 280 units right in the middle of that neighborhood, and that has not hindered sales. In Boise, a couple of examples, there's lots of apartments, townhomes and condos mixed in right next to the Highlands. Somerset Village, there's apartments and condos right here in the middle, right next to Somerset, where in the last 12 months, we've seen housing sales ranging from 715,000 to 830,000, certainly not impacting values. In Eagle, similar example, where you've got many apartments and townhomes coming in right into the Renovair neighborhood, where you had average sale prices of 887,000 and plus within the last 12 months. So it's appropriate, it's commonly done, it creates a nice diversity. I just will show you these quickly. I know elevation's really isn't in the, you know, the issue before you tonight, but just so you know, similar to what's been there, these are very attractive. Already, this is the townhome example, some of the elevation, similar to what's already been approved on the site, so it'll be very nice and cohesive. And with that, we would ask the council to approve the modification to the development agreement as recommended by staff, and I'd stand for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson. Council, any questions?
Mr. President.
Mr. Burton.
Deborah, one question. You mentioned that there would be rented and owned units. Can you please specify what you're talking about?
Yes, Mr. President and Councilmember Burton, that's correct. The apartments will all be for rent, but the townhomes will be for sale.
Okay, got it.
Counsel, any other questions of the applicant?
I have one. There was this earlier slide that made reference to Building J. It says, remove residential building, replace with open space. Then it looked like the current site plan has the full Building J there.
Yes, Mr. President, I can address that, and Bill could as well, but I can get you there. So this is J. The original staff conditions of approval had recommended a portion of Building J right here be removed in order to address staff's concerns with open space and parking. And that was what we revised, submitted the revised plans to address, instead eliminated Building M, which was right here, and created more open space and amenities on this end instead, which also reduced the units, reducing parking needs. And we had heard a lot of desires to have more separation from Movado Way, so.
One last question. Was there, in the four meetings with the neighborhood, was there any particular ask from them that was just too much or not feasible, other than don't make them apartments?
I'll have to defer to Rob on that.
We always appreciate it when applicants and the neighbors get together, even if they end up disagreeing, but they have constructive conversations. So what was your understanding of some of the ultimate conditions that weren't acceptable short of not making them apartments in the first place?
Density was a big concern to them, and I think also transition. And as Deborah's mentioned, also just kind of the view from Movado Way. So, you know, I suppose they would have, we heard comments like, can you just make it all two stories, things like that. You know, we've run the numbers over and over again, and we need this type of density for it to be a successful project. We were able to address a lot of the concerns with traffic by shifting the access point onto Movado, also providing some of that open space along Movado, and then increasing the buffer to the south. Those were concerns as well, as a lot of those homeowners kind of bought their homes expecting commercial development to the north.
Okay. And there was reference to the 2017 amendment with the commercial uses would have allowed up to 65 feet. Did I hear that correct?
Yeah, the Meridian City Code for the CG District will allow up to 65 feet in height.
And how tall are Building L and J? Are those both three stories?
They're pretty close to 40 feet, the top of the peak.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Appreciate that. Any, counsel, any other questions? Okay. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Counsel, before we get into public testimony, I did, I was able to find the concept plan that was approved with the 2016 application, if you want to look at that before we take public testimony to see how that looked back in 2016.
Way back then.
Back in the day.
Can I point out something on that one? Is that out of order? Could I point out something? What do you just add up there?
When you come up, we can pull that out, for sure. So we enter into the public testimony portion. Mr. Clerk, will you please read those that signed to testify?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, there were 22 sign-ins. Eight indicated they wished to testify. One indicated they're representing an HOA. The complete list is on your computers under Sign-in Dashboard, and the first person is Harold Leslie.
Thank you, Harold, for joining us. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Sure. Harold Leslie. I live at 2058 South Hills Avenue in the Movado community there.
Thank you.
Adam Mayor, Member of the City Council. Make it short. I did submit a comment letter. I, hopefully, you've seen that, my wife and I. It's in the comments, letter groups. The main thing is, I did notice in the revised staff reports that a mention of a traffic signal at Overland and Movado Way is now mentioned, or I don't know that it was mentioned before. Unfortunately, those references are using terms like anticipated, potential, future, without any specific timeframe. And for us, having a, those aren't satisfying. They're not giving us any comfort level that there ever will be a traffic signal there. So that's one of my main things. We really need a traffic signal there. Just simply, it's so dangerous to get out onto Overland Way. And Movado Way is our, you know, our main access. It's the collector's street that collects from Movado and funnels it out to Overland. The second thing is regarding a warrant, a signal warrant analysis, those are, that's a numbers game. And whether the numbers are there or not to warrant a signal isn't very satisfying either. I would hope that a full traffic study could be done, where it would look at the patterns of traffic, future levels of traffic, where traffic is going now, and where would be the better place to send it, rather than just a numbers analysis for a traffic warrant. The, Bill brought up that, and I didn't know this, that the thing with the access out to Cloverdale, and that was decided against because besides Movado Way, there's two other accesses. And I think what he's referring to, and if you want to throw up an aerial photograph, I think one of those accesses is Copper Point, which would be a great alternative because it takes you out through the Silverstone business area. And, you know, on streets that are fairly wide, you've got businesses located on them. Oops, I'm sorry, did I just do that? But it's down here at the south end of the city. Anyway, and it's a good street to handle that kind of traffic. The second access, besides Movado Way, unfortunately, I think is my street, South Hills Avenue, which leads you to Peter Falls, which then leads you out to Cobalt Point, which then leads you out to Silverstone, which then leads you to a signalized intersection on Overland.
Harold, can I have you summarize?
Sure. And just, what I'd like to point out, I thought that, I think that was very short-sighted, calling that an access. That's a local, single-family residential street, 40-foot wide lots, driveways are very close together. You've got kids and families out there, and you've got people racing down that street at close to 50 miles an hour, trying to get to that signal at Overland, just because it's a lot safer than trying to get out.
I'm sorry, I don't want to cut you off, but your time is up.
That concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Thank you.
Madam Mayor, next is Michael Fletcher, representing an HOA.
Madam Mayor.
Good evening.
Hello, Madam Mayor, City Council. My name is Michael Fletcher. I'm a homeowner of...
You do have 10 minutes.
I'm sorry?
As the spokesperson, you have 10 minutes.
Okay, thank you very much. I'd like to clarify something. Are you able to tell us, was the 300-plus apartments approved before the Movado Village community was planned?
At this point, we don't have that information, but we can ask staff to present that in.
I was just curious, because I think ultimately it's important. So I am a homeowner there, within the village, at 1869 South Tristram Lane, with the gated community with the community, Movado. And I'm hoping that you received my email, and it's in your packet, and you read it. I've written two. The second one really explains in detail the observations that I feel and the justifications for my objections. If you look at the neighborhood, we live there, and I eat at the restaurants in the neighborhood, but really, the only thing that's really close or even convenient is across Eagle Road on Overland. There's a yogurt shop and a coffee shop and a soup house, or soup store, that's hardly ever even open, a little sushi restaurant that I go to. So there's really nothing there. We bought our home there anticipating it being our last home, and we understood that the community was going to have commercial, a sandwich shop, a coffee shop, a hair salon, dry cleaners in that commercial space up on Overland. The fact that they had 112 units approved early on, I'm okay with that. That's life, and that's acceptable to me. What I don't feel is acceptable is continuing to cram more and more apartments in a very small space and having as many residents as maybe in our community, and 360-plus cars in a space about the size of your parking lot outside of this building. And the fact is that it isn't, it's very dangerous to be able to get in and out of Movado Way onto Overland at almost any time of the day. The other thing I'd also like to point out is that I feel like we're being pigeonholed, and everything leading into our nice planned community that took two years to develop is going to be multi-story rental apartments that, quite honestly, there's no harm in it. It's not against the law to live in an apartment, it's not a social insult. The fact is, people live in an apartment complex. But the fact is that we're spending anywhere from a quarter of a million to 300, three-quarters of a million dollars for a home in a master-planned community that took the city two years to put together. And then at the last moment, they're bringing in as many as 200 apartment complex dwellings there in that very small space, and it's right there, pigeonholed, and we've got to pass that to and from our forever homes. And I don't know if anybody's taking into consideration that the amount of density that's already there and what's already planned and under construction across the street on the northern side of Overland by Eagle. Top golf, medical buildings, restaurants, hotels, employees and guests to that space alone is just going to continue to burden that intersection of Silverstone and Overland, which is just right west of Movado Way. So I don't know if I can be as articulate now verbally with you today as I thought I was in my email that I wrote to you. But I really want you to, from the 50,000-foot level, as a city organization, as a group of people, you've done an amazing job developing the city of Meridian, and Mayor Tammy, thank you so much for the service to the city. I love living in Meridian, and it's because of what you've helped guide and helped the city develop into. But if you get down at the street level of Overland and Movado Way, and you start looking there and you consider living there, stacking 200 apartment complex buildings and apartment complex units there, it's way too dense, and it takes away from where we live and what we've invested in as a long-term residential purchase. The gentleman from, the construction company even told us in a residential meeting in the village, in our subdivision, that if the city forced them to reduce the number of units below 88 in the second phase, they would ultimately find it to be unprofitable. Here, you're having them drop it down to as many as 84, and that seems to be acceptable. They said that if it would drop below 88, it would probably be unprofitable, they would withdraw their application for Phase Two and building those additional apartments. The other thing I'm concerned about, too, is I've witnessed it at Ustick and Eagle Road when they built those beautiful futuristic-looking, forward-thinking apartment, townhomes, that is Verasso Village. Soon as those got built, soon as they got occupied, they sold them to a California investor. I lived there. I rented there while I was waiting for Movado to develop and be ready for my wife and I to build our home there. As soon as they sold that to that investment company in California, the management company was impossible to get a hold of. The quality of care of those units diminished quickly. As a retired deputy sheriff from Southern California, I felt like I was beginning to drive into my driveway to my townhome on records, and I kid you not, it made me feel like I was driving into an apartment complex that I patrolled in San Bernardino. Quality of care, the ability for them to manage it and the day-to-day attention went away almost immediately. And quite honestly, that's what I suspect will happen when they build these beautiful apartments, and it brings a lot of revenue to the city, but it's going to be short-sighted. And it's ultimately going to have a negative effect on our home values, and the potential homeowners driving into Movado Way to look at the Movado at Meridian as a place to buy a home and not just simply rent an apartment, those people, they're transient, they don't care, they're going to live there for three months, six months, a year, and there's no harm in that. But that's not a way to establish any kind of pride of ownership. They don't own it, they don't care, they're going to live there and move on. And the last point I think it's important to make, I mentioned that not only the residents of those apartments, but also... of those apartments, but also in the village and the Movado subdivision, those children are going to be potentially shipped to Ustick and Black Hat, miles and miles away, because they are overfilling or loading up the school zone, and those students are not going to be able to fit in those classrooms in our own neighborhood. So, it's something I'm going to ask you to consider, just please realize that we're looking at the long term, we're looking at, as homeowners, investing into our future and long-term stay in that community. And I'm sorry, I believe that the profitability of those eighty-eight units, it's purely about money, it's about profit, and they're not looking about the future, they're not looking at the quality of life that we're trying to achieve, that I think that the city and the planning and the establishment of that planned community that is Movado at Meridian offered. Because if I had the chance to buy after I learned about these apartments, I seriously would have bought someplace else. I would not have invested my money in that subdivision. I would ask you basically, really think hard about that, get down at the street level, think like a resident of that community as a homeowner, and think about what you feel that those apartments and what that density would mean to you as a homeowner if you lived there. Any questions at all?
Thank you, Michael. Any questions from council?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Burton?
Just one. I think I found your two letters in September, end of September and-
Thank you.
Mid-November-
Yes.
That you and your wife sent in, and one of the things that you raised, both in your written testimony and your testimony today, was with regards to the increase in traffic. And one of the elements of this project, and we hear it in others, is the existing potential traffic that would be created by its existing approved use, even at the time when you bought your property, the commercial traffic that would be generated, were it to be built out, versus what's proposed here. And the applicant made reference to some of these objective trip count analysis of the existing traffic count of eleven hundred trips a day, approximately, with its commercial approval, and maybe it's counterintuitive, but the residential apartment as proposed is less than half of it.
Your time is up, Mr. Burton, sorry.
You should give me a time, you should have a timer. I appreciate you bringing up the point, but, so when we're looking and considering that point, we look at these objective studies, which talk about trip generation from residential versus commercial, and-
Sure.
And so, we see on one side what appears to be data that shows, for better or for worse, this type of change, looking at traffic by itself, decreases traffic in the status quo by half. So, my question is, if that's what the data that were presented, is there any data that supports, that you're aware of, that supports that alternate position that says the residence, the residential component would actually create more traffic than the existing commercial approval? And what would be the citation of that data? Because I've never seen it.
Thank you for the question. I'm going to apply some basic logic, and some, maybe some assumptions, but I would think that those two hundred families living in those apartments, if all one hundred and ninety-four or one hundred and ninety-six are built, is twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, not only living there, but having guests coming over for birthday parties, playing in the pool, it's going to be constant, around the clock. And the fact is, if there's going to be some traffic there, at that intersection, that my family and my neighbors can enjoy, like a pub, a sports, you know, bar and grill, a dry cleaners, you know, those things, that's all right. Because those complement those several hundred homeowners that have invested in that long-term plan, and see that as a long-term residence to live in. You know, if that makes any sense to you whatsoever, it's like, it's the services, it's going to bring things that'll make my quality of life better, something I can ride my bike to. I can't ride my bike up over Eagle, over the freeway, to go, you know, to a restaurant on the north side of the freeway. That's just not safe, it's not logical, nor is there anything really, other than maybe three restaurants that serve food of some kind in the southeast quadrant of Overland at Eagle Road. So, I would say that if you look at adding commercial property, which it was already zoned for and anticipated for, and people were given the opportunity to understand that what was coming was commercial, it's going to generate revenue for the city, it's going to give a quality of life, and it's going to enhance the people that are living there. And a hundred and twelve apartments, like I said, it's acceptable, it's already there, they've got lumber there, they're going to build. I don't believe it's fair to take what was planned to be services or service-oriented businesses that were going to support us, as a community of homeowners, and just simply replacing it with more and more apartments, and putting it right up on that corner. I certainly am glad I didn't buy on Vechron, because I would have two- or three-story apartment buildings, and people standing out on their park, you know, patio, looking at their towels draping off from the pool, or drinking beer, while I'm sitting in my backyard trying to have a barbecue with my family. And that affects privacy and that, a level of quality of life. And moving that driveway back south, you know, if you look at Movado Way, the entrance at Movado, there is a large rock column, it's kind of like the gateway, the entrance of our subdivision, and now you're pushing an apartment complex and exit closer to that. I've worked traffic, as a law enforcement officer, I've worked traffic accident, it's common sense going to tell you it's going to be a lot of in-and-out traffic, somebody's going to come off of Overland onto Movado Way, and all of a sudden, I have to stop what I'm doing to allow somebody to pull out on an apartment complex, or a kid, or maybe a school bus picking kids up in the morning? And I believe it's going to create some kind of obstruction of you, and that's going to become a hazard all in itself. So.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Madam Mayor, next is-
Okay. I appreciate your enthusiasm, but if we could have a little decorum in the room, and no applause.
Madam Mayor, next is Clarence Orton. Clarence?
Thank you for joining us. If you'll please state your name and address for the record. Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council. My name is Clarence Orton, I live at four zero nine zero East Lacoltry, in the Movado Estates. I would support the previous gentleman's statement about not just traffic, but car traffic, but people traffic. When you put that many people, that high a density, that close, they're not just going to recreate around the block where they live, they're going to impact everybody that's around them, and they're going to walk in with their pets and everything else into the surrounding development. So, I think it's not just car traffic, but people traffic's going to impact it. One of my biggest beasts that I was going to bring up here tonight, but it probably has to do with all developments in Meridian, and that is parking requirements. There's one development right on the northwest corner of the Movado Estates, where the density was so high that they approved two-story buildings with, and the garage, and the entrance into the garage, that is the front of the house, a two-car driveway. That is, there's no parking on the street, or anywhere else for these people to park. And so, what's happened is, is that the overflow from that development is now parking on the Movado Estates streets. I realize they're ACHD streets, and we don't own them, but now, just because of that high density and the lack of parking, they're parking out on, into the Movado Estates development, which is impacting me. And so, I do object to this high a density on the Movado Way, and would hope that you would leave that, go back to commercial.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, next is Kevin Johnson.
Hi there, I'm Kevin Johnson, four one seven one, south, no, east, oh, that's the old address, East Divide Pass Street, we've only been there six months. We lived in South Meridian for twelve years, moved five miles away to this beautiful new home. I pull out a picture, I'll show you the house, it's gorgeous. And now, so I'm really worried about this. We have, everyone's saying high density, Mr. Parsons was talking about high density, these folks are talking about high density. This is a stat, these are facts from Realtor.com, I can share the URL with you, but a high density of renters increases the property, or decreases the property value by thirteen point eight percent. Are you telling me that I have to take a thirteen, thirteen percent hit on the value of my home? That's unacceptable. That's totally unacceptable. Let me ask you this, rhetorical question, because it's probably not Q and A, right? How about we put a apartment complex near your homes? Good, or no? Of course, no. You don't want that, all right? Here's the other thing, high density, that number of people, increases crime, right? That's fact, you know it. Now, our common areas are very nice, they're going to come and use our common areas, they're going to have their common areas, but guess what? They're going to share our common areas, and I'll tell you what's going to happen with traffic. Going out Overland is almost impossible in rush hour, and rush hour is like, it seems to be all day long now. So, what's going to happen is, they're going to leave their subdivision and come through ours, so they can get to the two lights, either off Eagle or off Overland, and so, what that is, that those three hundred and sixty-seven parking lots, which have cars, are going to start going through our neighborhoods, all right? And again, that is one hundred percent unacceptable. We are already seeing an impact today, right, with just simple things. Two hundred more people there, three hundred, whatever the number of people, whatever the number of cars, it is one hundred percent unacceptable. I don't want, I don't want one percent loss on my housing value, right? That is unacceptable. I know some of you guys are leaving, you know, you have nothing to lose, you can vote for this, and there's no ramifications, right? We're not going to vote you out next time, because you're gone. So, please don't do this, don't do this to me, don't do this to us. Thanks.
I guess, I just want to say, we're elected officials, and we take our responsibilities very serious, whether we have four more years or four more weeks.
Yes, ma'am.
We take our responsibility very serious, and I take issue with you saying that we have nothing at stake. We do, we care about this community deeply, and I hope you don't think that we take our responsibilities lightly.
Actually, ma'am, no, I, so, just for the record, sitting here and watching the process has been engaging, I've been absolutely enjoying it here, way better than watching TV at home, so thank you for that, for including me in this process. I don't think that, my worry is that, you know-
Yeah, I get it.
Yeah.
Mr. Burn?
Madam Mayor, while I have you up, I'm not, obviously, I know where this is located, but I'm not familiar with the surrounding part of what he's talking about, of the, where traffic may or may not be going, you know, where the two streetlights that he's referring to? Can you go to Google Earth for us, Bill, and show us what he's talking about?
So, Madam Mayor, Councilman Burn, this is the exhibit the applicant provided, but it shows you the, how traffic disperses throughout the area, and that's, when I look at ACHD's staff report, so I'll touch on the previous gentleman's comments about whether or not the fifty-five component was part of the plan, or not, and what the timing was for that. So, again, this project came through as Phase One and Phase Two. It was the same developer that brought the project before you. Phase One was a comp plan amendment, annexation, developed the three hundred and twelve-unit apartment complex with that concept plan that you saw. A traffic study was required for that. Part of that traffic study said that there was going to be over two thousand trips generated for the three hundred and twelve apartment complex. As part of ACHD's analysis, it did mention that an access, only eight percent of the traffic was going to be using the Cloverdale access if one was built or required by the city. It wasn't required. They felt the traffic study and ACHD's staff supported that most of the traffic would go on Overland, or head to the west through Silverstone, and that's why, when you see this graphic here, that's what the applicant's portraying. There was two-step streets, it disperses, currently, there's multiple ways through Silverstone to get out to Overland and to Eagle Road. I believe this is a signalized, this is a signalized intersection here, and this is now a signalized intersection as well. So, anyone, I don't, I'm not a traffic engineer, but I'm not sure why you want to turn a life left out onto Overland Road at rush hour, when you can go to a light and get out a lot safer.
And so-
And these streets are designed and built to handle the trips that were proposed for not only the apartments, but for the residential that's occurring now. So, there was, I think with the Movado plat, there was over four hundred residential units plus the apartments, and so, all of that was taken into account, and all of the, even though it's not a continuous collector through the development, or an access out to Cloverdale, it was analyzed that all of the adjacent streets and the connectivity was adequate to handle the additional trips, not only for the apartments, but also the single-family that's developed out there. Now, as far as to the timelines for this development, again, Conger came in September six, two thousand and sixteen, the apartments were approved for three hundred and twelve units. Jim later, Mr. Conger later came in, about two months after that approval, and got his Movado subdivision approved, which had the fifty-five and older component, which, at the time, the apartments actually abutted the fifty-five and older component, so it was actually, there wasn't even a buffer between the uses, it was going to be a ten-foot buffer, and those apartments were going to be next to the fifty-five and older component. And approximately a year later, he amended the plan to reduce the unit counts, and he added the single-family homes that are in front of the fifty-five and older component currently, and reduced the multifamily from the three twelve down to a hundred and twelve. So, within roughly about a, less than a year and a half time span, the developer changed his mind and came back and modified this plan. But again, the apartments, the fifty-five and older community, the attached homes, and the other, I guess, the affordable housing component for the development, and then the estate lots that are south of, that terminate at the end of Movado Way, were all part of that master-planned residential community, along with the commercial. So, again, this was all contemplated, even though it may have come back with different iterations, it was all contemplated that it would be integrated and sharing these roadways.
But I guess, in all fairness, until you build your house, you don't really look, and by then, it had changed.
Right, yep. Madam Mayor, that's, I think that's something that we struggle with a lot of times, where we always want the apartments to go in first, so that the neighborhood knows, in this case, that happened, but then, the plan changed, and the developer came back and did something less intense, and now we're here, going back the other way.
All right. Mr. Burn, did that answer your question, and did you have a question for Clarence?
Madam Mayor, follow-up, I just have a question. Sorry, Dean, I'm sorry, Dean, I have a question, a follow-up question for you, sir. Using the mouse, in your opinion, where do you think the traffic is going to go?
So, sorry. So, right now, Overland, we got Movado Way, so right here is where the estates are.
Yep.
This is where the village is.
Right.
So, if this road right here is what's going to be used, so this is what takes you out to the signal, or it's going to be a combination of here to here to Copper Point, and then out to either here, or this is actually where the other signal is. So, actually, well, so sometimes I go this way, I can tell you, when I leave, I always go to the signal, because trying to make a left onto Overland right here is, you'll sit there for ten minutes. I mean, you'll sit there for ten minutes, easy. So, I know what I do, and that's a path of least resistance, I would almost guarantee you that people will start using these residential streets to get out. We're not getting less traffic, it's only, we're only getting more, right? So, and I don't care what ACHD says, traffic is bad. I mean, it's getting bad, you know it, we drive it every day, it's crazy.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Palmer?
To sound like a broken record, by doubling down on what Bill said, and Mr. Burn, that's the point. The whole thing was designed to give people an opportunity to densely reside- opportunity to densely reside in that brown section there that hasn't been fully built out yet, and to be able to access the enormous employment centers and food services and, um, the hotels, the gas stations. All, all this stuff was all meant to be able to not have to get onto an arterial road and still be able to access all that. I mean, you can get from your house or from there, all the way out to, to Mojo's, to, um, Jack in the Box. All these places would only happen to cross Eagle Road at that, that light. I, I went to Mountain View High School, um, San Francisco, sourdough eatery. It was a brave company. Went in, hidden into this, um, office complex and survived. And, uh, now they're surrounded by ample retail. But the only way that, that those services, the, the dry cleaners, those other companies continue to come there and, and to serve this area without you having to go onto an arterial road to get to them, is if there's more people there to justify additional commercial. The reason all this stuff is going on the other side of, of Overland, um, ICCU with their office building and, and the, the golf place is all because there's planned dense residential there so that people can access all of these things without having to drive all the way across town and risk additional time on these dangerous roads. Um, so we get that, yes, it's gonna push more traffic into your neighborhood, but that was the idea.
Can I, can I comment?
Did you have a question?
Do you have a comment?
That was a statement.
I don't know if I'm allowed to.
Absolutely.
Oh, thank you. Um, is, is that everyone's habit? I mean, is that what people do? I, I don't go to any of those places. I typically go across the way. I go to my favorite places, right? Our habits are not to go to the closest place because it's convenient. I mean, people might live in those apartments and might work there, but chances are that's not gonna happen. They're gonna move, live in Boise, or they're gonna live, work in Boise. I work in Boise. I work downtown. Right? I mean, I, I just don't know if that, you know, the, the thought is right. The plan sounds good. It's sound. But I don't know if that's what is the reality of what's gonna happen. Right? I think it's gonna push more people out to Overland.
Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, ma'am.
Madam Mayor, next is David Ronley.
Thank you for sticking with us. If you'll please start with your name and address.
I'm Dave Ronley. Uh, live at 4291 East Blueberry Lane in Movado Village.
Thank you.
The gated community. And like Michael had to say, and, and the fellow here who I don't know, um, there's a, there's a lot of, we bought the home long distance. We moved from Boise or from Meridian to out to the coast. Uh, knew we'd be moving back at some point, had a death in the family, came back. Our family said, oh, look at this cute little house in this little gated community. You know, and you're getting old, Dad, you're gonna, you're gonna fall down and hurt yourself if you don't, you know. So why don't you come back and, and look at this? And so we, they took us through. We got, kind of fell in love with the place. Um, there was, there was ample reason for us to, to do it now rather than later when we're over and et cetera, et cetera. Um, we asked about some of these questions about what was going out on the street, Overland. It was commercial was going out there. Nobody said anything about apartments. Maybe we were oversold and been under-delivered. But we, that's all, that's what we knew. That's what we were told. So now we hear about all this, we're, we're a little unhappy. Um, we moved back and decided, you know, this was gonna be the last home we bought. You know, we'll just live there forever. Our kids live right close by. Uh, no reason to, you know, have to buy another house and go through all of this sort of stuff. We downsized considerably. And I hadn't thought of it this way until listening to some of the neighbors, because in the gated community, your seniors, a lot of them, most of them, and we still got another 70 or 80 homes worth to put in there. And, um, people started mentioning the, the little byline, yeah, this is our forever home. This is our forever home. This is, we bought it so we wouldn't have to do this again, wouldn't have to, you know, be put through the wringer of, uh, having to move and all that sort of stuff. And, you know, nice as the, uh, as the sales pitch that we heard was, was about, you know, all of this development stuff. Um, if we'd known it before, of course, we probably wouldn't have lived there. And it's, it's, it does, you, you have to consider the human factor. We're, you know, we, we live there. Um, there, you can't, you know, I lived out in Cuna at the time when we lived here before, we lived here for 37 years. The question was always, when putting in all those stoplights out along the Highway 69, how many people do you have to kill before they'll put in a stoplight? That was always the comment that, that came about. Well, we're gonna get one at Overland, um, in somewhere, sometime, uh, which means somewhere between tomorrow and eternity, I presume. Um, but that doesn't help us now.
Sir, can you, can you summarize?
We try and get out of there and get out of there alive. Because that, that's the biggest thing between the density of population and the traffic to be able to get in and out. Otherwise, you take all the back streets, like was just pointed out, which are little two-lane streets and there's parking on some of them and something like that. So think about the human factor.
Thank you.
Beautiful place. I, we love, we love Meridian. We moved back to Miller, Meridian, and we're happy to be here. I just hope it works out.
Me too. Thank you. I'm gonna call a 10-minute recess. And, um, so we will reconvene at 9:30.
We needed to take a quick break. Mr. Clerk, who is the next one signed up to testify?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Next is Joanne Gormley.
Thank you for joining us. If you'll please state your name and address.
Joanne Gormley, and I'm at 4372 Batcharon.
Thank you.
So I am directly behind what's happening. I moved after fifty years. This was the first town home in that division, so I was the first one who moved in. And seeing the West Apartments, I did ask a lot of questions about what was behind us. I was told adamantly, "Commercial." And lo and behold, within two weeks, I received a letter. So I was not real happy. And my complaint with your traffic issues partly is, everyone's leaving, if you're in apartments, in the morning and coming back in the evening. A dentist's office, there isn't going to be two hundred people pulling in there at the same time, or a coffee shop. And I have a daughter-in-law who teaches, and the schools are already overwhelmed. And to make them more overwhelmed, I feel bad for people who have to bus their small children. I don't think that's right. So I'm basically not happy with it. And that's the extent of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, next is Blake Haggert.
Mr. Haggert left.
Mr. Haggert left. Tamara Hall.
Good evening. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Tamara Hall, and I live at 4299 East Goldstone, and that's Movado Estates. So there's three portions of this subdivision, obviously. And we live in the Estates. We were the first home that was built in there. We spent over half a million dollars for this home, and we did our due diligence. We knew exactly what was going on. We knew there was going to be the Village, which is gated. We knew there was going to be the Greens, which were duplexes. We knew there was going to be apartments on the one side. We were fine with all that. And we knew there was commercial up front, which we were very excited about, that was going to complement our neighborhood. That's why we made the decision where we live, especially the schools. We have a ten-year-old at home, and we wanted him in specific schools. Now knowing that that could potentially change, and my child could be bused to a different school, breaks my heart. It's scary on our roads, as is, and that second phase hasn't even been built for Zach Evans' homes on that State side, with no entrance coming off of Cloverdale, and only really the main entryway being Movado Way. It's scary. I take my kid to the bus stop every day, and people don't stop at the stop signs that are already in the structure. So I'm concerned, in general, with the new phase that Zach is going to be doing, and then with potentially these apartments that are going to be happening. That's going to bring a lot of traffic, because our little side roads, they're not big enough to funnel cars in and out of. I mean, they are, but they're lined, and they're very small. It's not the main roadway into our subdivision. Those are pretty much my bullet point issues that I have, is that, you know, I know that as homeowners, we have to do our due diligence, and we have to pay attention to what we're doing and what we're getting ourselves into. It's not just a real estate agent. And we did that. So I'm just a little bit bummed that we bought where we wanted to live, we loved what we seen, and to find out that now it could potentially be apartments that are going to be gating our community. So with that, I would just hope that you can take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Tamara.
Tamara.
Madam Mayor, Tamara.
Thank you. Sorry.
What are the elementary and middle schools that are the closest to you, that your son should be going to, per location?
So it's Pepper Ridge that he should be going to, but we actually, he goes to Spalding. So we have two different elementary school buses that come in to that. But he's supposed to be going to Lewis &amp; Clark, and then he's originally supposed to be going to Mountain View. And we just moved four miles down to downsize, and we stayed in that general location because those were the schools we wanted him to go to. And then now that West Ada has basically stated that the density with the kids is potentially becoming a problem with overcrowded, and they're going to possibly bus these kids to other schools, doesn't make me very happy. I mean, it's just, that's something we didn't foresee happening. You think your kids that are in that neighborhood are going to go to the school. And we know that boundaries can change, they always do, and that's fine. But those schools are typically right in that general area, not way out. So that's concerning.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, that was the last of the people indicating they wish to testify.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. This is a public hearing. Is there additional testimony? In the back, and then we'll get the gentleman in the front.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for hanging with us.
Sure.
If you'll please state your name and address.
My name is Robert Spring. I live at 2052 South Jodalea Way in the Village at Meridian. I just want to share some of the sentiments that I'm hearing here tonight. One of the things, I just relocated here, and I had a choice of moving anywhere I wanted to. And I picked this place because of what it was, and because of what I thought it was going to be. Now hearing that it's going to be different, I have to rethink the possibilities of whether I'm staying or I'm going to go someplace else, because I am concerned about the traffic, just the density and all that. It's interesting, the compelling argument that they made earlier today about how good everything's going to be, yet when they did submit to us and present to us on two separate occasions, and I was there and I hear four happened, they said to us, "We would walk away if we knew you guys were opposed to this. We wouldn't do this." And we're only doing it.
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
They said that they would walk away from the whole deal if they heard that the residents were opposed to this. The people in this room that said those comments. And they didn't. Obviously, they came back with a totally compelling argument the other way, simply, I think, to satisfy some investors in Southern California, from what I understand. So it's certainly not, the money's not going to stay here. It's going to go to other investors outside of the area, and that's a little bit concerning. The school situation, I know you guys received a letter from the school board, I believe, saying that, you know, "They're already overcrowded. It's going to be a problem. You're going to have kids in the neighborhood being bused." I feel bad for those parents that have to do that. And I think it's concerning that that kind of stuff is going to get ignored. What I didn't hear is the sense of community that we get when we're in a development that has neighbors and homeowners, which is something that you don't really get in an apartment building. There's really no sense of ownership there. People come and go. I've done that myself. I've relocated a few times. When you're in an apartment building, you're just there, and you have that blank stare. You don't make eye contact, and you go by your neighbors. In our neighborhood, we all know each other. I know most of these people in the room right now. And quite frankly, there's only about, you know, ten percent of us here. If everybody did show up that was opposed to this, this room would be almost full. If everybody showed up that eventually will build there, you wouldn't have room for everybody in here to oppose what is being proposed to you right now. And I just want to make those comments known. I did send a letter and submit that to you on two separate occasions with some other concerns in there as well.
Thank you for joining us.
Sure. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Bruce Turner. I'm at 4055 East Goldstone. And I wanted to just touch on a couple of things, as one lady did. You know, you'd asked a question about the use, and that's kind of what, "Oh, I gotta get up." I promised my wife I wouldn't, but I said, "No, no, no." You know, because it's just like she was saying, you know, a doctor's office, they're coming four cars and four cars all day long. That might add up to be two thousand cars during the day, and that's great. But getting all those people out, more importantly, I think you've heard and maybe get a sense from the community that we've been lied to by the cabal of Devco, Evans &amp; Evans, and BlackRock as to what was actually going to be there. And then I think they knew all along, because originally in some of the ACHD documents from October 2016 that one you had up, they had indicated at that time that, and it was a nice idea to have the water fountains off during the break, but, yeah, their letter of October 10th, 2016, said that Eagle and Overland and Eagle and Silverstone were near capacity, that's in 2016. So we know things have only gotten worse. Another light, as many people suggested, would probably take away. But if you look at the development, you know, the bigger map, and if you could bring up that one from October, I think it is the 2016, the original one, originally, the apartments had a road.
Sir, I need you to speak into the microphone so we can get you on the record.
Try to beef it up.
But the screen is right in front of you.
Oh, perfect.
And you have a little mouse there that, when he gets there, you can...
So originally, as I understood from the ACHD documents, and maybe I got it wrong, and I'm sure things have changed since then, but there was this road over here to my far left, right here, that was coming out and then connecting. So this area down in here is the villages. So they originally had an exit where they could come out this way. Boy, that's hard, man. That's, you know, come out this way and then exit that way. Now they're coming out to Movado, okay, coming back through the neighborhood. I had a chance to speak to the officer during break a little bit too, and pleaded with him with the troubles we're having in our neighborhood. It's not well planned. There, you know, I would go back to change it to twenty for the cul-de-sac or whatever, because our houses are so close together. As Monty said, there's just a driveway, and maybe six feet, and a driveway on the two stories. So consequently, when people, they can't park on the street, so they're parking in these other areas. So they're parking in front of the mailbox. They're parking on the corners. They're parking all over the place. And, you know, I think I've become good friends with some of their parking enforcement people, you know, to have them come out as well as some of our other neighbors. Although I must honestly say, as I told him, we've stopped calling because it's of no use. Well, you know, we can't control it. Commercial vehicles, a guy who cuts lawns also cuts, you know, or plows snow, so now he's got a plow system set out there for, you know, four or five days at a time. But my only request would be that I'd ask you to punish the cabal of Evans, Evans, BlackRock, and Devco, and tell them no. You know, they knew some of this stuff was coming. The apartments were supposed to go up with Phase One of Movado, but they didn't, you know, because they knew it hurt sales.
You need to summarize.
Okay. My summary would be, please, punish Devco, Evans &amp; Evans, you know, for their lying to us, if no other reason. Questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Any additional testimony?
Chief, did you sign up?
Madam Mayor, I did with Chris. Just to remind you and counsel that, when this project originally came forward a few years ago, I testified against it for traffic and connectivity issues because of the traffic that was, would go into Muir Woods. And there was talk about a exit off of Cloverdale, and that has since been eliminated. And for the record, I live close to that area, so I have opportunity to drive by it at least twice a day. And we've already created a mess there. And I see near collisions every single day at Movado. Movado needs a traffic signal. I don't care what the data numbers say, the number of traffic. It needs a traffic signal. And if you look at how the apartment complex is currently laid out, those residents are not going to go through the subdivision to get out to the signals, at least until they learn it, because it's a difficult track. And if you drive through those subdivisions, you drive on narrow streets, you've got cars parked on both sides. It's not smooth. I've personally driven it. It's not easy until you learn how to find those signals. So we already have a mess. So don't add more density to it. But looking at the current proposal, you're only talking about four more units, I believe. So I don't, I think the mess is already created. I don't think you can make it worse. You've already done it. Sorry, you have. And I don't know what's going to fix it. But you do need to, if nothing else, personally drive it there and experience it, like the residents are saying, because it's a mess. I don't have a position on what you should do today. I just want you to know that it's already bad. Just don't make it worse.
Any additional testimony?
Good evening.
Good evening. Madam Mayor, City Council, my name is Hillary Johnson. I live at 4171 East Divide Pass in the Estates. And it is my understanding that they're not adding, their proposal is not to add four more units or eight more units. Their proposal is to change it from what it currently is and what we bought into, which was commercial. So we knew that there was going to be apartment units and commercial. So my husband and I raised our kids in Meridian, and we bought in good faith in this neighborhood when we wanted to downsize. And I just ask that you keep it what we bought into, commercial. That's all.
Thank you.
Questions?
I'm sorry. If you'll sit down.
Yes, ma'am.
And we'll first see if there's any additional testimony, and if council would like to have you up again. Any additional testimony? Council, do you want to hear from Justin from Haida County Highway District? I would. Absolutely, Madam Mayor, members of the council. It's my understanding that when the overall Movado subdivision master plan was originally approved, that a traffic signal was anticipated at that location when traffic signal warrants are met. It's been said tonight, it's a numbers game. And that's why ACHD has requested that the applicant perform a signal warrant analysis to determine if those warrants have been met, and it is now the correct time to install that signal. I don't, off the top of my head, know the financial responsibility of that signal. I imagine it's the applicant, I'm sure they know. I haven't, I didn't do the research based on this application before you tonight related to that, because it's actually a separate approval. But I can certainly provide you that information. It's really irrelevant who pays for it. Either way, it will be put in when the warrants are met. You've heard opinions on that tonight, and I have nothing to, no further information to provide related to those opinions.
That was a good non-answer. Counsel, any specific questions for Justin? Nothing he can specifically answer. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Fletcher wanted to make additional comments, counsel?
I just wanted to clarify.
You can't talk until you get to the microphone and restate your name for the record, please.
Again, this is Michael Fletcher, a resident of Movado. No disrespect to you, chief. I wanted to clarify, it's, they're wanting to take away commercial and add 84 or 88 more apartments to that, to that corner. That, that's just a lot. And I, for the record, I just wanted to be clear on what they're ultimately wanting to add. The 112, I believe, as a community, we all agree and we accept that. It's the additional 84-plus apartments that we're really caught up on. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that clarification. Any additional testimony? Okay, would the applicant like to close?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the City Council, Deborah Nelson again for the applicant. I'll try to keep these in sequence, but forgive me if I bounce around a little bit to respond to the comments. Schools, there was comments about concern with busing, particularly at the elementary level. But we do have a letter from West Haida that talks about the capacities of schools. The Elementary School of Pepper Ridge actually has capacity. I know you guys are well aware that your Mountain View High School is well over capacity, and that's why Ojaihe High School is coming. The timing is great for that because it's going to be online August 2021, which will be before the build-out of these projects that we're asking for. So the timing will work great for the high school there. Also, I just, just another comment about schools. These are one- and two-bedroom apartments. They're going to have a low impact on school-aged children, anyway. There is an A and a B site plan option before you, and Bill's memo addresses that, that staff had a preference towards A, just because it puts the parking on the interior of the site, not on the exterior. We would agree, either one is fine, though. There was a comment that we're adding more density, but we're not adding density. We're actually decreasing density just very slightly. And we are reducing the traffic trips. As was noted by Councilmember Palmer, I mean, that is the purpose of these roads. And Bill described that, too, of the dispersment through these backroads is a part of why the city always requires connectivity, is to allow those options. But I also just wanted to make the point that was not mentioned, that when there's commercial trips, they are also dispersed, and we're going to have fewer trips with apartments than commercials. So the concern about dispersment through the neighborhoods is reduced from this, this use versus a commercial use. There was concern, well, those are at different times. And that's true, different uses have different intensities. The most intense time that ACHD tracks is PM peak time. And the PM peak time, using that same example that we talked about before of 84 apartments versus 47,000 square feet of a mixed use, primarily office, not even high retail, would be 37 PM peak trips for apartments and 121 for the commercial mix. So the busiest time on the neighboring roads is going to be most impacted by commercial uses. There was discussion about, concern about visibility around the island by moving the access road further to the south. ACHD actually went out and looked at that and determined that vision was not a safety hazard there. There's discussion about, there's only a couple of restaurants that can be walked to in the neighborhood. Just on a quick search of Google Maps, looking at the area, within .9 miles, we came up with 16, all around the site on Overland, at the Overland and Eagle intersection, and in the immediate commercial next door. So that's quite a list, I won't read it to you. Get back up here to my notes. There's a lot of, continuing on that commercial theme, you know, people desire a commercial in their neighborhood. I get that. I, I mean, I think that's why we're pointing to the great walkability and bikeability, because people want that. There was discussion of, wouldn't it be great if we had a coffee shop or a dry cleaner? But I want to remind you that what's there now is 6.7 acres of unutilized commercial. So a neighbor's desire for that doesn't make the market drive to that. It doesn't make the market develop the commercial, particularly when all the commercial has developed adjacent to it. This is a great place to put the rooftops to support that existing commercial. And we are still leaving, let me find the acres, 1.5 acres there. Still a further opportunity to find those uses, that neighborhood uses. 6.7 isn't getting developed now. There will still be a commercial pad of 1.5 to try to bring in those additional uses. Whether that can be retail or is more appropriate for office remains to be driven by the market. And that's the actual use. This, this, this project here, instead of that theoretical desire for what the neighbors want, here's an actual use that is being brought to you that is consistent with your comp plan. Less than 20 units per acre is appropriate, it's well within the 6 per 40. And it's appropriate for all the reasons that staff has said that they're supporting this. One final point, you know, there's a lot of discussion about those people that live in apartments and not wanting them near us. But I think it's really important to remember who those people are. They are residents of your city that by necessity or choice need housing that is more affordable or appropriate for where they are in their stage of life. There are children that just graduated from school, and they have their first job. There are young couples starting out, saving for a down payment to buy a house. They are elderly people on a fixed income. They are people that want a lifestyle where they can walk to their employment, that they choose this specifically because it's next to employment, because they don't want to drive to downtown Boise. So, I mean, it's appropriate for the city to think about housing for all. And I live in one of those neighborhoods that I showed you an example of that has apartments right next to it in Somerset. I enjoy having them there. I think that that could provide transitional housing for the neighborhood. I lived in apartments before, never have a concern about them being in my neighborhood. And I hope that you don't have a concern about them being in your city. So with that, I'd stand for questions.
Counsel, questions?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Deb, where are you on the signal study? When is that going to be finished? Justin, at least talked a little bit about it. Who's ultimately responsible for the cost of the construction, if it's warranted? Help give me a cut-up to date on that.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Cavanagh. We have actually already hired Kittles and Associates and begun the work and submitted preliminary data to ACHD, but they want some additional data. So it's not required until we're pulling, pulling building permits. But we have already gotten started on that. But we don't have the results that have been accepted by ACHD at this point. They want some additional analysis. As, part of what ACHD is going to look at is the data, the numbers about whether it's warranted. They're also going to look at allocation and funding, whether that's funded with their budget, a combination of contributions. But we have a condition of approval in our conditions from ACHD, which we accept, that requires us to provide that study before the building permit can be pulled and also to participate in whatever signalization is required.
Madam Mayor. Can you summarize the results of the initial summary that was sent to ACHD that seemed to support the construction of a signalized intersection there on Movado?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Cavanagh, no, not at this time. It's just preliminary at this time.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
So counsel, any additional information needed from staff or any of the others that have testified? Would you care to have a discussion before closing the public hearing? Or are you ready to close the public hearing?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I don't have a lot in me to talk tonight, apologies. But as often the case when we close the public hearing, inevitably, something triggers a need to open it. So I think, at least for the short time, let's keep it open in case we need to pull extra information from somebody.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I'm happy to chime in, at least get the conversation started. You look at this kind of presented as a plat in front of you when we're looking at our computer. You try and take a look at it as, for me anyways, as where it sits as a whole and then where it sits within the neighborhood and then where it sits in Meridian. And overall, I actually, I really like this project a lot. There are some concerns, some concerns that I think that are really valid. And for those of you who didn't attend, it's, man, my heart goes out to you. We, we oftentimes get the brunt when you purchase a piece of property, whoever's selling it to you tells you one thing, and you get before us, and it's completely different. That's the worst. And I've got some ideas for our new mayor and council that I think we need to embrace to stop that and nip that in the bud, because we're hearing about it more and more. When you look at it from a piece for me, I think it, I think it fits. I think if you're going to have high density, have it out there on Overland, it's going to get on the interstate. That seems appropriate to me. The piece about schools, though, is also concerning to a degree. You know, we've got to think about 1,000, capacity for about 1,000 students right now district-wide from the last, you know, sheet the district provided us. The frustration is for folks that, again, buy into it with the understanding, hey, we're going to send my kids to this particular school. No, that's not the case. As council's heard many times, I, I was, I changed elementary schools three times in five years without having to move when I grew up here in Meridian. I lived on Cherry Lane and Locust Grove, and I was bused to Cloverdale between McMillan and Shindon, past four other elementary schools. That was in the 80s. But I think there is a certain expectation. When we purchase a home, the intention of being able to send our kids to that particular school. So I got some other ideas for your council on that. But it all goes back to, and the comments from the citizens are about what it's like to live there. Now, I don't think it was intended with this assumption about those people being apartment people. Appreciate, Deb, you saying that. Many of us have talked about this time again. I'm, I was an apartment person. We're a community that has diverse housing. Diverse housing means there's going to be people who live in big houses and small houses and apartments and houses in big yards and houses on smaller. That's what makes our community great. So I don't think there was any intent to disperse people who live in apartments. I said, I could also understand, oh, it's going to be a change. To me, what it boils down to, for me, is Movado. And if that is not a signalized intersection, the point about folks driving through the neighborhood to get out, I think that is correct. And so I support everything about this if we have the answer about what's going to happen on Movado. Without that, it's hard for me to say emphatically, yes, I'm, I'm going to support this. It's not always easy being the guy that says the thing that's counter to what the folks in front of you say. And appreciate the testimony tonight. I've really tried to listen to address what the concerns are. I said, come, come January, I'll be the only guy that lives on the south side. So the comments about restaurants, man, I'm with you. I love Sakana, but we need some other things over there, and we need them fast. And I'd love to see, you know, a bunch of different restaurants there. Apicat has tried to do that, trying something else. It's hard for me to get in the way of that just because that's also something that I want. But we need to have that in South Meridian. And I hope that somewhere soon, we'll see more of that. Those are my two cents. Keep the change.
Ms. Roberts.
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Cavanagh, I think you said that very, very well. Those are my concerns as well. And I don't know how long it takes to find out the information on a signal. I don't like the thought of pushing something out. But to me, that signal potentially makes a world of difference because everyone who's been up here has talked about traffic issues, including our chief that drives by there at least twice a day. And so I don't know if there's any timeframe on that, but I think that's information that could make a difference.
Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor. I mean, I think if it's denied and then they don't build anything, there's certainly not going to be a signal put in. That, that whole portion, it confuses me. I mean, obviously, having a signal there would be great. But if nothing gets built there, no signal goes in. I mean, if, if this is still short of warranting one, then they're certainly nowhere near getting one. So it has to be the, the traffic there for the people who control the roads to decide there needs to be a light there.
Madam Mayor, if I may.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Councilmember Palmer, you're, you're correct. But I guess for me, if there's not going to be a signalized intersection, then I don't think I'm in support of this project. So you're correct, if it's not built, there's no signalized intersection. But if ACHD says, even with this development, a signalized intersection isn't warranted, I'm really struggling to understand how this benefits our community if it's built.
I guess I've sat up here long enough to see all kinds of things. But I put myself in the neighbor's seat and say, when I, when the first building went up and this was apartments and office, and now you're saying it should be all apartments, that, that changes things. And it's, it's good to have a planned community and people know what's coming. They didn't know this was coming. So that's my first issue. I, I think that if this had been there before, and it was obvious it was all apartments, this is the perfect place for that. It really is, along a transportation corridor. I agree with Mr. Cavanagh, but it wasn't. This was apartments and office, and, and now it's changing, and it will change the dynamic of a community in that area. You also look at the rest of that area, it's also transitional. You are going to have other places that you can put apartments. This is not the one and only place. What is concerning is it comes in in 2016 as a high-density area. And then a year later, they decide, hmm, well, that hasn't changed anything, so we're going to change it. And now they're changing it a third time in three years. I'm sorry, I've seen a lot of land in Meridian sit there for a while for the right project. And when you look at all the potential out there, there is potential for some, some neighborhood office and neighborhood commercial that, that can support the residential that resides just behind it. I, I don't see a compelling reason to change this again because in two years, they haven't been able to find someone to build office when there's a lot of land around there to do certain things. There is concern about the, the lack of circulation and where these cars would go. And, and certainly, I too have concern about the, the traffic light and the timing. But approving this just to get a traffic light is not the great reason to, to be making a decision in that, in that fashion. So, and those are, you can keep the change on that one, too.
Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
If we were to base decisions, all of the land use decisions before us, on whether or not that development may increase traffic, or have some level of effect on the rest of our lives, then the 16 years that you've been here that we've doubled the population should have been in fighting the growth. However, every single person that testified, that I believe, forgive me if I miss somebody, that lives there, moved there recently, I've spent almost my whole life in South Meridian. The population of Meridian, when I was born here, was 9,000. It's now 150,000, 120,000-plus. Every single person that's moved here has had an effect on my day-to-day life. But I welcome you to Meridian, and I, I mean, I've said this over and over and over for the last four years I've been here. The reason I was able to be raised in Meridian, and then stay in Meridian, was because there was a diverse housing options for us. Shortly after my wife and I got married, and now we were going to have twins, a little bit a year after we were married, we had two kids, and we weren't going to be buying a house. And so, we lived in some apartments when I first ran, and then we were able to buy a small house, it was built in the eighties, 1,000 square feet, and then now we're in with four kids, a larger house, thanks to Cory Martin Building, affordable starter homes. And I'm able to be back in South Meridian, which was my whole goal growing up, was I want to live back in South Meridian, raise my family there. So, Meridian is the same place that it was for me growing up, it's just bigger. There's more people, there's more cars, there's more restaurants, there's more jobs. I work in Meridian. I make sure I stay where I'm at, because I get to get on the freeway, go in the other direction, and get off at 10 Mile, I'm only one exit away from my job. And that's thanks to a big, open piece of land that somebody was willing to develop. There's four-story apartments there, there's also five-story office buildings, prevent, making it so I don't have to drive to Eagle anymore, I don't have to be part of the Eagle Road traffic to get to work anymore. But the only way all of those things keep happening, where people are able to stay in Meridian, the term I hear from you often, Mayor, is all the traffic goes through Meridian, but we want to try to capture some trips, especially be able to have opportunities for people to not have to leave Meridian. And that exists now, and it's growing, and this is just another step in ensuring that that continues. I mean, if all of this planning and the whole, the whole point of this comes down to whether it warrants a traffic light, then, I mean, maybe come back with another version with an extra 50 apartments, and see if that warrants a traffic light to warrant approval. Reality is, the peak time, whether it's commercial or residential, the science, the reality, is that it's going to be less traffic. Eventually, more stuff will be built there, if this doesn't warrant the traffic light, and then get it done.
Any other comments? Mr. Burden.
I'll be brief, really. I'm pretty much in agreement with what my colleagues have said. I don't have really too much to add to the discussion. For me, we hear time and time again, we don't want apartments here, we don't want apartments there, apartments are terrible. I don't, and I understand where those concerns come from, however, there are places in our city and throughout different municipalities where I believe apartments work, and I believe this is one of the areas. I think that if you were to just look at this, at this picture here in front of us, not looking at everything that's around it, knowing that the Eagles here, Overland's right there, the freeway's right there, ton of commercial, this area completely makes sense for what is proposed, in my opinion. The only thing that I, that I'm concerned with, and the only reason why I'm not in support of this, is the traffic center. I'm very familiar with that area of our city, and I've driven by there early in the morning when I'm getting my flooring crews ready. I drive past there all the time. And it is a mess. It's an absolute mess. And whether it's commercial, whether it's apartments, there needs to be a light there. There needs to be a light there right now. The only difference is, the applicant is asking us to amend the development agreement to, to change what was originally proposed. And so, it's giving us an opportunity to say, hey, if you want apartments there, build it, put in a traffic light. So, I mean, that's, that's one of the, you know, that's just, that's one of the options that we have. And so, I'm okay with this, if there's a traffic light there. So, that's my, that's my opinion.
Okay. What would you like to do? Mr. Burton.
I'll be real brief. The overarching concern that I had with this, and I think all of my colleagues bring up great points that I do agree with, but I think Madam Mayor's comments with regards to the cadence of change has been pretty rapid, and I'm not comfortable in light of the swiftness of the switch over those three years that you cited and Mr. Parsons had cited. So, I think the change that occurred in December of 2017, changing this to commercial, reliance of the neighboring community, that that's what it was going to be, is what's appropriate for me right now. So, at this stage, I don't think the change in the DA is appropriate.
So, Council, looking for direction?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I think our public hearing's still open. I'm curious, got a question maybe for Deb, if she's available, about this traffic signal piece. Sorry. So, you've heard, since then, the conversation with council's kind of view on this, and it really being contingent on if there's going to be a signalized intersection, if it's going to be warranted. With that in mind, should this be continued to a future date and time? How much time would you need, do you anticipate you would need to be able to get that analysis review back from ACHD to give you a definitive answer?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Cavanagh, I'll give you as much of an answer as I can, and then see if Rob has anything to add. ACHD has already reviewed and approved the project with a condition of approval that binds us to provide the warrant analysis, and then contribute to the signal. So, they control when a signal is warranted, we don't, you don't. So, I appreciate that you have an application before you and a decision that you can approve or deny. I'm not saying you don't have control over it, I'm just saying that, you know, what we have before you is a condition of approval that does require the signal to move forward, and our contribution towards that signal when it's warranted. But they're going to make that decision, we're already on the hook, as much as we're going to be on the hook. And the timing that they set forth for that was before there's a building permit, so you'll have control over it before there's any activity that could lead to any increased traffic at the signal. So, the timing for that, because they've got to review and approve it by then, that doesn't mean there's a signal built by then, I understand, but that is the timing that we are forced on, is before we can have a building permit, they have to review and approve our signal analysis. Then they're going to make a decision about whether a signal's warranted. That's not a, I know it's not a satisfactory answer, because I don't have, I don't have their timeframe in my control. I know, just further details of what we have in our control, our traffic engineer thought he would have the study done by December 20th, but these guys have a December 15th deadline. By the way, this is not the same applicant as before, the same developer as before, just so that's clear. There seemed to be some confusion about that. So, these guys have an opportunity to do this project, it seems like a good fit, but their due diligence deadline ends December 15th. So, unless you have, do you have anything to add to that?
No, and that's, that due diligence period has been extended twice already. I'm not super positive we can get another extension. So, that's just the reality of it, I'm not.
Thank you.
Mayor, Council, if I may, if you had a chance to look at the email that was submitted today from Kristi Little, kind of explaining the scenario. So, one, they submitted some data to them, and they said it was insufficient, so they have to provide more information. Then they said, a couple things have to happen here. So, they said, after we receive the required information, our engineers will review, determine if a signal is warranted. If it is warranted, do we really want another signal in that location? Because there's already, they look at spacing from the Cloverdale intersection to where that current one was built, into Rackham, and then the one at Eagle, so they have spacing requirements for signals. And even, that's the other requirement, if they want one, and then the third part of it is, if it's warranted and they want one in that location, then the applicant, I don't believe it's the intention to put it in, I think they pay their proportion of share or contribute money towards the signal. So, regardless of this is approved tonight or not, a signal's not going to go in probably until such time as ACHD has the funding or widens the road to the seven lanes in the future. So, I'm, the applicant's going to do is put a proportion of share for 10 years, or whatever the timeframe is, and it's going to sit there collecting interest, and if it doesn't happen in 10 years, they get their money back. So, at least I wanted to daylight that. There's, there may not even be a requirement for a signal, we just don't know at this point. So, if a signal is something that you're hanging your hat on, I don't know, you might as well just go with your, the original and just deny it if you think a signal's warranted, because we don't know if it's going to happen. And if that happens, I don't see the applicant moving forward with that kind of conditional use modification either, because it's a moot point at this juncture. They need this first, before they can have council or commission take action on the conditional use permit. So, I just, I just wanted to shed some light on that for you this evening, that it may be a signal, it may not, we just don't know at this point. And I can let you know, when I was at the Planning and Zoning Commission a couple weeks ago, processing the continuance, I know some of our commission was concerned about the timing for the signal as well.
Madam Mayor, may I? Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. While we don't know if we'd be able to get an extension, I guess we would prefer the opportunity to try rather than an outright denial. So, if that helps to, with your decision, if there is more information from ACHD that would be helpful, we would like the opportunity to try to collect what information would be helpful for your decision. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Laura Roberts.
For me, it would be very helpful to have more information on the signal, so I would move that we postpone and wait closing on the hearing until we have more information.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
I think what I'm, what I'm hearing from Councilmember Laura Roberts is maybe, close the public hearing, still take written testimony, and continue it to a future date. I don't know if we can continue it to a, to be determined date, to allow the applicant to have further communication with the Highway District related to the question of if a signal is warranted, if it's warranted, does ACHD want it? If it's warranted and ACHD wants it, who's going to pay for it, and when it would be constructed? Now, those are a lot of questions, those are big questions. Questions that, I don't know if we're going to have an answer a week from now, a month from now, Bill's comments, 10 years from now. So, that, that's the part that I'm wrestling my head out. So, I assume, I think that's what you were trying to get to, I just want to make sure that you're clear.
Thank you. Councilwoman Cavanagh.
I don't think you can close a public hearing and expect only written testimony when we'll get new testimony or new information that we'll need to take testimony on. So, I think your options are to continue this to a date certain, and hope there's information by that time, or I guess the other option is to close the public hearing and take action
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Those are our options, and I prefer the former as opposed to the latter.
Well, either way we go, I just need a motion.
Madam Mayor, and I guess that's, that's still the question I have, is to what would that need to be? Last thing that I want to do to these residents is to continue it for 30 days, to have them come back 30 days later and say, oh, we're still waiting to hear from the Highway District, we'll see you in another month. That's, that's not fair to them. So, I'm looking for a lot of experts in the room to give me some signal about how far out we would want to continue this out to, so we're accurate to the folks that are here in the room. And if nobody can do that, then another reason perhaps maybe void denial would be warranted.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Neri.
Madam Mayor, and maybe, just a suggestion, I guess, our time is short in the year. I recognize there's probably some challenges with the Highway District and others, trying to get information. If this council wants to have at least the opportunity to make a decision on this, you could set it to January 7th, we could put it as old business. I know we're trying to not have a lot of things on that night, but we wouldn't have any other public hearings that I'm aware of at the moment. And at least you would have the opportunity, again, I think Ms. Nelson and the applicant can at least report back progress, if they have an answer or something more definitive at that point. If they don't, then it's going to be the next council's decision regardless.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Move this process along. I move that we continue item 9H, application H-2019-0099 to January 7th.
Second.
I have a motion as second, to continue this to January 7th, 2020. Maybe we'll have 2020 vision, right? There you go. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The ayes have it. We'll see you January 7th. Okay, item 9A is under our legal department and clerk's office, and a discussion about timeline for alcohol cell, cells license renewals.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. We'll try to keep this under an hour. Just kidding. Recently, Nancy Radford from the clerk's office, who is our licensing specialist, and I attended a meeting with both the state police, as well as Ada County, and all of the cities within Ada County, to discuss the licensing process and how it varies from city to city, and how, how we can make a more streamlined system and more efficient for the alcohol licensees within the county. All licenses for alcohol, beer, and wine go through the state of Idaho initially, they have to be issued by the state, they then go to the county next for issuance, and then they come to the city. The process currently is that all of the licenses for alcohol, beer, and wine expire on April 30th of each year, except for the city of Boise. The city of Boise expires on December 31st of each year, which they realize actually doesn't work very well. So, what the completed, they would then have another month to get the city's process completed. This would be more efficient for us, this is something Nancy has expressed and discussed previously, that we'd like to have a different date, that it is a big crunch. Obviously, we would have some communication planned, if that's a recommendation from this council to move forward, to contact our customers and let them know that what we'd be planning on doing is, in April of 2020, we would issue them a 14-month license. So, that would, their license would be good for 14 months for the, for the first year, and then from that point on, it would be an annual license. This would have no impact on the cost, because the fees are set by the state. So, whether we issue a one-year license or a 14-month license, the price is the same. So, there's no, there's no impact, positive or negative to the customers or the city, the cost is the same. Again, time-wise, it would be much more efficient to separate these dates out, and moving the county and moving the city is much more, much simpler than trying to get this legislature to move the date for the entire state. So, we think it's a, something worth exploring. I've looked at our ordinance, I've talked to Ms. Kane, who drafted our ordinance, we both are in agreement, it does not require an ordinance change to do this, it doesn't require a fee change to do this, it requires simply notice to our customers, and we have to change the documents that are required to be filled out. But it's a fairly simple internal change administratively to do. Again, I'll work with the clerk's office on what kind of notice and how we would let our customers know. I guarantee you, there will still be people on June 28th trying to get their license approved, because that's how some people roll. But I think it would be a much better, efficient system for our customers. We have over 150 alcohol, beer, and wine licenses in the city, and they grow, right now, approximate the rate of about seven per year on the alcohol side. Beer and wine does not have a limitation. So, we are only going to grow in that area as we get larger. In case you didn't know, every 1,500 people, we add a license a year. So, six or seven, do the math, that tells you how many people we're adding per year. I don't see that slowing anytime soon. So, if you are okay with it, we can move forward with developing the communications and move forward to do this in 2020.
I think it's an awesome idea.
I will take that collective nod as a go-ahead. Great, thank you.
Okay, item 10B, since we vacated A, is ordinance 19-1856. Mr. Clerk, will you please read this by title for the first reading? And I would recommend to council to have a second reading next week while Councilmember Mylum's here. Okay. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. An ordinance, adding Meridian City Code Section 6-2-8D regarding dogs off-leash in a public place, adopting a savings clause, and providing an effective date.
Item 10C is ordinance 19-1862. Mr. Clerk, have we have kind of vacated this, or?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, since the direction was to bring forward the UDC discussion into January, I would suggest we simply vacate this now, because we would prefer to do it at least somewhat coincident, or consecutively, so that it would make more sense for the public.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Rich is asking to maybe approach the podium. He sat through a really lengthy conversation, if you're okay to...
I was just intrigued with our whole process, and wanted to participate in it.
Absolutely, learning experience. I thought there might be some confusion with this. So, this is a separate ordinance. This is a ordinance amendment to Title VII, which is our parking code on public streets. It has nothing to do with our earlier discussion about the UDC. This is an amendment that was brought before you by me about six months ago. We discussed it, and then it fell through the cracks, and we didn't bring it for the public reading, we didn't put it on the agenda. And then I realized, we're losing some of our council and our mayor, and I better get this before the current body. So, you're still familiar with the items we talked about. And this is a slight amendment to the, to Title VII, so we can issue parking tickets in the instances that are outlined in this amendment. And it's essentially for double parking, fictitious plates, and to issue tickets when vehicles are parked in front of a fire hydrant. Right now, we can't issue those citations if the driver's still sitting in the car. So, they could sit in front of the fire hydrant, they could sit in a crosswalk, they could sit in these places. If they're in the car, they can sit there all day long. And the amendment makes it to where they can only do that if they're actively loading or unloading a passenger. So, any questions on that? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Mr. Clerk, will you please read this by title?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. An ordinance amending Meridian City Code Section 7-2-2B regarding prohibited parking, amending Meridian City Code Section 7-2-5A3 regarding parking on public streets other than alleys, adding a new section, Meridian City Code Section 1-2-1C regarding failure to pay infraction fine.
Hey, you, I was going to say, you've heard this read by title. Anyone want to hear it read in its entirety, but I am assuming not. Okay. Counsel, you want to take action on this one tonight?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Little Roberts.
I move that we approve ordinance 19-1862 with suspension of rules.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve item 10C. Any discussion? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Burton. Councilmember Palmer. Councilmember Little Roberts. Councilmember Cavanagh. Councilmember Burton.
All ayes. Item 10D is ordinance 19-1865. Mr. Clerk, will you please read this by title?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. An ordinance related to H. 2019-0066 Millbrae subdivision for annexation of a parcel of land located in the southeast one quarter of the southeast one quarter of Section 4, Township 3 North, Range 1 West, Boise, Meridian, Ada County, Idaho, as described in Attachment A, and annexing certain lands and territory situated in Ada County, Idaho, and adjacent and contiguous to the corporate limits of the city of Meridian as requested by the city of Meridian, establishing and determining the land use zoning classification of 38.15 acres of land from the RUT to R8, medium-density residential zoning district in the Meridian City Code. Providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County assessor, the Ada County recorder, and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law, and providing for a summary of the ordinance, and providing for a waiver of the reading rules, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Counsel, do you have a motion?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Little Roberts.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve ordinance number 19-1865 with suspension of rules.
I have a motion and a second to approve item 10D. If there's no discussion, Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Burton. Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts. Councilmember Cavanagh. Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
What a bunch of sickies around here. Oh, sorry. That wasn't, you know, trying to be really rude, but, okay. Anything under future meeting topics?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
Two items coming out of tonight's public hearing. One is a conversation amongst, again, whether it's current council or new council, about improvements to our neighborhood meeting process, and whether that should involve a neutral third-party staff, somebody who has no ties to the neighborhood or no ties to the developer, that can maybe more accurately report what occurs in these neighborhood meetings. I feel like more and more, we are hearing from both the developer and the neighbors, that their account and depiction of the meetings are polar opposites. And it's, we've got to find a more equitable way to have a good understanding about what's occurring in those meetings, both for the neighbors' benefit and the applicant's benefit. So, I don't know if that's now or future council, but that's something I hope that we all that are here now or in the future can discuss. The second piece that relates to that is, and maybe this is a conversation for staff, ways that we can delineate on an application, or for the public to understand that when they're, if they're buying a piece of property in a certain part of town, what potential school or schools that development can support. We're seeing more and more, and I'm sure you're hearing about this as well, I move into a neighborhood, there's a school in my neighborhood, and I'm not going to that school. And I don't know how we can help our citizens so that they have a good understanding about that they might not go to the school that's in their neighborhood, and what that process looks like. So, I don't have any answer to that, but we heard testimony on that tonight. I've had three calls in the past six or seven weeks with concerns from folks who are saying, you gotta be kidding me, I just bought a house and I can't go to the school that I can see from my back door. Got to find a better way.
Madam Mayor.
That's going to be a difficult one, but I have met with Dr. Reynolds, and, and we're looking at, trying to look at a date for February to get a joint meeting between the council and the school board, and that might be a really good topic to have.
Madam Mayor, to that point, and obviously what you and Marylex Sinison want to discuss with her, I hope that those future meetings are more of an opportunity for the trustees and the council members to engage with each other. The last two have been very presentation-heavy, and I think the information that's conveyed in those presentations could be accomplished at a school board meeting or a city council meeting. It's good information for us to have, but I didn't see a lot of, as much of a benefit of having it being presented to us jointly, as having the opportunity to really engage with each other on some of these issues and talk through them. So, less is more.
And that actually would be a good discussion to have.
Thank you.
That's why I brought it up. Any other? So, we will, it will probably be good to have that discussion with the incoming council, and, and maybe Mr. Clerk and our attorney can come up with ideas. Certainly, it would probably be a cost that would be passed on to the development.
Madam Mayor, I agree with you, I think it will be. And I'm not saying it's something we need to do now, but I think it's, the conversation needs to occur. Honestly, if I'm an applicant and the public is coming and testifying that is counter to what I have said, I would gladly pay that to have a neutral third-party say, whoa, 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 that's not what occurred, and here's the reality.
Or you have it taped in a script.
How, Madam, be correct. Madam, I think these are all conversations about what makes sense for the future group. We've got to improve that process.
Perfect. Okay, if there's nothing further, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move we adjourn the meeting.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes.
Anything else?